Come to order at 7:00 PM and if the Secretary, please call Row.
Dennis Sobolski.
Here.
Kendra Barberina is here, Tim Boyd.
Here.
Bob Gorshavitz. Um, I think he stepped out just a moment. He is here. Uh, Gail Greger?
Here.
Uh, John Itzel is excused and so is Keith Hostel.
Right. And do we have a motion to approve the, uh, this evening's agenda as submitted?
Mr. Chairman, I approve that, or move that we approve the agenda as submitted.
Your support?
Second.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Barberina in support of Commissioner Grinzer to approve the agenda as submitted, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, thank you, and, um, the minutes of our last meeting of November 17th, your approval for?
Oh, gonna do that next week.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay, is there anyone here that wishes to speak to any item that is not on the agenda? Okay, then we'll move on. And we're on to old, old business. And that is the, uh, Application 2406, and if Ms. Wolf would, uh, please present her planning report?
Now we'll get into the planners' report. So, last month, the applicant submitted a preliminary site plan.
Ms. Wolf, is your, is your mic on? Can you hear her?
Can anyone hear me now?
Yeah.
Alright, that's much better.
You're gonna have to back up and start over.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, guys. Alright, so, last month, the applicant submitted an initial site plan for, uh, the PUD option, which is not the final site plan for development, it is the option to have a PUD in general. Uh, the last time, it was postponed, which is why we're back here today, and the second site plan included some substantial changes to the original that, in the planning department, we see as merits to the PUD option itself. One is that the site plan included a complete tree survey, uh, this was all the trees on the site, both those that are eligible for restoration and saving and those that are either dead or undesirable. Uh, in total, the development plans to save approximately one-third of the heritage trees on-site, uh, which we consider pretty good. As you know, heritage trees can be removed in the township, they simply have to be replaced at a higher ratio than a regular tree. Um, so in general, the proposed PUD plan would include approximately 1,000 new trees planted on-site for a net gain of over 690 trees. So we consider that one major change from the last site plan to the current one. And the other one is that the applicant has now reorganized the intersection on the north side of the site so that it directs traffic left onto General Drive, which is an industrial drive, rather than right into the neighborhood. Alright.
So where are you at in the, in the report? Are you going through?
Oh, sorry, if you want to scroll down? Keep going down to like the fourth page, I think?
Eligibility findings?
Yep, keep going.
Which, which brings up a point, I want to make sure everyone understands that we're here tonight to see if this, if the applicant has met the, uh, PUD eligibility requirement. So that's the purpose of this meeting. The trees are important, we got that from the last time, uh, you folks were here, traffic, those kinds of things, uh, have been addressed by the applicant. Those are site plan issues, which will, uh, they're still in a rough stage at this point. If, uh, we recommend to the Board of Trustees that they're eligible for a PUD, and the Board of Trustees will also have another hearing, and then they agree with that, uh, then it comes back for site plan, and that's when we get into the nitty-gritty of trees and roads and spacing of houses and that kind of thing. Are you gonna go through your report?
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to bring up the first few things that have changed from the last time.
Alright.
So, let's go back to the top, Bob.
Do you want to start at number one, or?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Alright. So, the proposed project includes 103 townhomes, 121-bedroom apartments, 135 two-bedroom apartments, and 15 three-bedroom apartments. The proposed project has a density of around 12 dwelling units per acre, which is far lower than the 35 dwelling units per acre that is typical for a PUD or allowed for a PUD. And we're reviewing this site, which is currently an industrially-zoned site, so right now, this site by right could have any industrial facility built on it, um, and looking at the alternative of housing on the site instead. So the first thing is the PUD option eligibility criteria, there are eight. Um, one is to conform to the spirit and intent of the PUD. Two is to generate a benefit to the users of the development and the community. Three is to be located on the site containing natural assets, which would otherwise be destroyed. Four is to be located on a site that contains natural or man-made features of significance. Five is designed in harmony with the character of the immediate area. Six is to not generate traffic that adversely impacts adjacent properties. Seven is to include an intensity of uses that is compatible with the adjacent land. And eight is to facilitate the redevelopment of a functionally-obsolete site. In the planning department, we find that in general, the PUD submission meets all of these requirements. You go to the next page, Bob? First, we find that the proposal does meet the intent of the PUD option, which is to permit flexibility in the regulation of land. So the PUD option allows for a better planning of open space, more conservation of various natural features, and in general, more flexible use of traffic throughout sites. The second one in planning is that we find that a recognizable material benefit to the users of the project and the community would be a result of this project. And that the contiguous open space of the site would be 51.4% of the total site space, and it would include many more heritage trees that would otherwise be, um, remain if it was industrially developed. Next, we find that it would increase the housing mix of Plymouth Township's, it was daintily, um, it would change our multiple-family dwelling unit count from 6% to 13% of our housing stock, and overall would encourage a nice tenant mix for people who are looking for different housing options for aging in place or for younger in life. Next, it is a well-positioned site in terms of amenity access. Access to downtown Plymouth was the third most favorable neighborhood feature by surveyed residents in the last master plan. As such, this site's location, next to key grocery stores, schools, other amenities, is a well-positioned area for residential development. Next, as I covered earlier, the site does contain substantial trees. Uh, these trees are enjoyed by existing neighbors as a outdoor amenity, and the proposed PUD option would allow for the preservation of these trees in a way that would not be possible if it were industrially developed. We also do make a suggestion that further trees could be preserved with slight parking modifications and reductions, but that is for a site plan review, that's really not a part of the PUD option review. The project does not contain man-made features that are historically, culturally, or otherwise significant, but there is an opportunity for this site to incorporate amenities that would promote education regarding the history of the township and the immediate area. Alright, Bob, let's go down to five.
So we're on op, or number, uh, criteria number four?
Mm, well, that's just the parking one, so that's really for a site plan review.
Sorry, I missed what you said.
Yeah, no worries, let's go down to five.
Go down to five?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you. So, per the township zoning map, the proposed project encompasses a mix of parcels that are industrial and Ann Arbor Road corridor commercial. However, the future land use map specifies that these should be intermediate-density residential housing and commercial. As such, the proposed project is entirely intermediate-density residential and open space, and generally conforms to the intended uses of the master plan. The project also conforms to the master plan objective to continue to use multiple-family and office land uses as a transition between existing or proposed single-family residential developments and more intense land uses. So the design of this PUD would help buffer the single-family residential homes from the industrial facilities on the other side of the railroad track. Finally, the density, bulk, and character of the project. So we find that the density of the project, which is far lower than that permitted for a PUD, is generally in keeping with the surrounding neighborhoods. The lower-density portion of the project would be near the existing single-family residential homes, and the higher-density would be towards the railroad tracks. Additionally, can you go down to the next page, Bob? We find that the general design of the homes is in keeping with the surrounding homes and their design, lots of, you know, lateral siding, brick facades, regular peaked roofs. However, we did note that some additional facade work could be done to make them mesh better with the surrounding neighborhood, however, that would be a concern of a final site plan review. Here's the project apartment rendering samples, again, generally in keeping with the design of the surrounding neighborhood. And now we come to stable development. So one of the requirements of the PUD is that it does not interfere with the stable development of surrounding areas. In the opinion of planning, this would encourage stable development of the surrounding areas, whereas allowing the current industrial use would most likely damage the value of properties surrounding it, or, and otherwise, you know, interrupt stable development of the residential homes nearby. Alright, let's go down a little bit.
Hang on one second, let me just make sure we got the...
Pedestrian network. Okay, so, the proposed PUD does include an arrangement with the developer to create a sidewalk along Ann Arbor Road that would connect underneath the railway to other existing sidewalks, this would help fill a very important gap in the current pedestrian network and provide amenity access for the residents of the site and near the site. And vehicular network. So, since the last plan's submittal, as I mentioned, the vehicular network has been changed so that at the north end of the site, previously, there was an intersection that allowed for equal flow of cars to the right and left, which meant some cars would be directed into a residential neighborhood and some would be, like, directed over to an industrial area. That has since been revised, so that most cars exiting the site would be forced down the industrial drive rather than the residential neighborhood. Yeah, sure. Yeah, we'll pull up the plans in a little bit and come back to that one, is that okay, Bob?
Yeah.
Okay. We're almost to the end, and we'll come right back to that. Okay. And the last one is the intensity of uses associated with the proposed development. So, this would be a part of final site plan reviewable, is guaranteeing that there's adequate fencing and buffering with plants and everything else, but in general, we find that the vibrations, glare, odors, et cetera, associated with the development are generally of acceptable levels, especially compared to the industrial development that is allowed there presently. Alright, and let's go to the last one, Bob. And the last one, so, as many of you know, the site currently houses the former Elks Lodge. The lodge currently sits vacant and does not actively provide a benefit to the township, as it does not have any notable architectural heritage or cultural significance. Under the PUD option, the developed portions of the site can be put to a use that actively benefits the immediate neighborhood and community. And under the site plan, a retention pond will be placed on the developed portion of the site, ultimately collecting stormwater runoff and providing natural space. So now, let's pull up the plans and go back to that road, Bob.
So the plans, I, I think I have to go to the, uh, I can't, I can't get them, they're not in the packet, right, and we have to get them off the website, oh, there they are.
So here, can you zoom in on the road access plan at the top, Bob?
Which one?
The one at the top of the plans. Oh, no, sorry, you were on the right page. I just meant zoom in a little bit for folks. So here you can see, um, previously, this road intersected exactly a 45-degree angle, which made it equally easy for people to go up either street to exit. Now it is tilted so it directs traffic over onto General Drive and past the largely industrial facilities to the west, rather than equally onto both roads. That is up to Wayne County to decide, because it will be a public road. Alright, any questions from the commissioners on the planning report?
Not at this point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great.
Well, we're gonna have questions in a minute after, uh, we're gonna listen to the engineering report, and then the applicant's gonna present, um, this presentation, and then we'll open it up for public comments. That way you get the whole, whole picture, so some of those questions might be answered, uh, in the next few minutes for you. Okay, and, uh, so now we'll turn over to the engineering report.
Alright, thank you, so from the, um, from the last report, not much has changed outside of the access road to the north, they're still gonna be providing both, uh, water main and sanitary sewer, the storm sewer detention basins are, um, in alignment with what Wayne County would typically require. From the access perspective, they did make the change to make that access to the north, which will help alleviate the traffic to the south. And otherwise, it's, it's in alignment with what, what we talked about previously.
So, um, I'm trying to understand something, because one of the issues before, uh, from the, uh, egress in the south was the potential backups or stacking. Has that issue been remediated, or no?
No, I, I think that that, uh, issue will be remediated by having that access to the north, we went through and did a detailed review of the traffic study, and the traffic study showed significant, uh, delay increases, not only at the shopping center, um, intersection, but also the intersection to the east and west, without having pretty substantial mitigation.
But people, people aren't really gonna use that exit to the north, um, except if they're going into town, or they're doing some, something local, they're gonna go out to south to go to a grocery store to get on the 275, or go to, go to Canton.
Right, but, you know, during the times of significant AM and PM delays, where the stacking is present, you would have the option to go to the north. Most people, as you mentioned, will still use that, you know, exit to the south, and they will have an increased delay from what currently exists, but they now have the option to go to the north rather than travel around, uh, go in the wrong direction and go around the shopping center, which is what we were trying to mitigate.
But if you were in your morning commute and you have to get on the highway, you'd go out of the north, and then you'd have to go east on Ann Arbor Trail and south on Hagerty and take a left turn, which is pretty convoluted.
Right.
I also have a question on that same subject. Uh, Bob, if you could just bring that memorandum up a little bit?
Bring what up, Tim?
Uh, what you have right there, if you could just bring that up a little fuller to the screen. This is a, a four or five-page report, um, it's dated on November 22nd, and the way I'm reading this, it, it is a critique of the developer's traffic study. And if you actually go through it, line by line, it appears to me that it's pretty critical of the developer's traffic study, and in fact suggests, as Bob mentioned, that there potentially could be significant, uh, degradation to Ann Arbor Road traffic from this development. So I guess my question is, what do we do from here? Unless I'm misreading, it would suggest to me that this is an issue?
Right, no, and I think that's something that we've been talking about since the very beginning with the developer and their engineers, and also suggesting this, uh, report, that one way to mitigate that is to provide the additional access to the north, those are public roads to the north, that is a road that has capacity in Ann Arbor Trail, um, and there is still a way around that. I think there is a possibility to, and make improvements to Ann Arbor Road such that it could handle that, but from what we've seen, from what, what MDOT will allow with actuation versus full corridor, it's gonna take substantial improvements to get to that point, versus just providing an additional access to the north will help mitigate that. And we're just talking about AM and PM peaks, we're trying to avoid the AM and PM peaks.
Will you do a follow-up to confirm that the access to the north will successfully address this?
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions on the engineering report? Okay, and the applicant's also received a report from the fire department, and there's four or five issues that need to be corrected from a public safety perspective. So with that, the applicant is here, and, uh, we're ready to hear your presentation.
Laura's out sick, uh, do you happen to have it on a, on a thumb drive or anything? Can you email it to, um, well, I have to, I have to sign onto my personal email, and everybody will see my password unless I remember to shut it off on the screen. And my password is password123.
Did you send it to, to the, uh, to Laura's township email address? Oh, well, I think, don't you have access to it? Okay.
Want to do that?
Um, while you're doing that, I also saw in the engineering review, there was a statement that, um, this would require improvements to the two roads to the north. Who would be responsible for those improvements?
So that's something that's ongoing and we'll get into during the engineering, um, review, but that is something we've discussed with the developer about, uh, potential improvements necessary, um, to the roads to the north, as those are gravel, we've also spoken with Wayne County about that, and potential matches, et cetera.
Alright, Bob?
All set?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, to do a lot of our...
No, I'll log up at the end, too.
Alright.
Don't touch anything.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
Let me know when you're ready. Oh, okay. Great, well, can everyone hear me okay? Is there a microphone here? Scream and yell, thank you. Good evening, um, I think we saw a lot of you folks a couple months back, but for those who may not remember me or are new, uh, I'm Alex Martin, I'm the division president for Toll Brothers, uh, I oversee our mid, uh, upper Midwest operations, but I'm here in, physically in Detroit. So what we're gonna present to you tonight is not a full presentation like we saw before, it's really just a way to illustrate the changes to the plans above and beyond what was in the planner's report, so you can see some of what we view as some of the substantial changes we made based on the feedback, um, from our last meeting. So if you go to the next slide, please. Um, so this is just a brief agenda, um, we're gonna talk about the Birmingham to the north in an effort to continue to separate ourselves from our neighbors, um, talk a little bit about how we eliminated some parking, which was of some concern, again, to the homeowners to the north, um, wanna talk about some things we did to create some more open space, and, you know, essentially created a small pocket park in the community itself, um, and then we do wanna talk a little bit about some tree preservation and open space changes that we made. Majority of what I'll show you will be illustrative, and then at the very end, there's just a handful of bullets. Next slide, please. So, starting with the Birmingham to the north of the townhomes, so again, this is Toll Brothers residential-for-sale part of the project, um, this is, was the previous plan that we reviewed, I believe it was back in October. So you can see at that point that there was only an eight-foot vinyl fence, that was the form of the separation between the residential component of the project and the neighbors to the north. Uh, we did meet with some neighbors who lived in that area, and we determined that, you know, between trying to save trees and some other mitigating circumstances, a higher and better use of that space would be what's shown on the next slide, please. So this shows a four-foot-high berm that will be landscaped, um, which will allow to be much higher than in an eight-foot fence. So initially you have a four-foot berm, there'll be a mix of canopy and evergreen trees, which will get you up over the eight feet at the time of planting, and then obviously as those trees mature, they'll fill in and give a, a very robust landscape buffer, first of all, we had before. So that's one of our first major changes. If you go to the next slide, please. This is now on the west side of the project, this is now where the apartments will bu, border up against the neighbors to the north. Yeah, there was a, a berm there, but we, we thought we'd do a little bit better based on some of the feedback. This is first of several slides that you see that will incrementally change the impact of where we are today, or where we originally proposed to be, um, first where we are now, and I think, I wish I had a pointer, but if you can see where this is building A, and if you go to the top right corner of it, if you can see it, there's a distance of 113.3 feet. You know, that's pretty key, as you see when we go to the next slide, some of the changes we've made have allowed us to increase that separation. Oh, thank you. So this is where we are now in the revised plan, um, you can see we've made this berm not so much necessarily taller, but much bigger. So now it's a much larger berm, which will give greater separation, um, and you'll see in a moment, we eliminated all the parking that was here, and essentially we went from 111 feet of separation to 187. So we're now greater than half a football field away, just to, you know, the front edge of these homes here. So that's a significant increase, it's almost a, more than a 50% increase from where we were before. Uh, next slide, please. Going back to the parking, so initially, not only was our berm smaller, but we had quite a bit of parking here, um, and I think the concern there was noise, doors opening and shutting, some people liked loud fast cars, um, and certainly headlights, you know, all those parking, you know, parking to the north, which would essentially, you know, the fence and Birmingham potentially leak through and shine into the houses. If you go to the next slide, please, you'll see all that parking has been completely eliminated. So all the parking for this building, for building A and B, is now flanking the building as opposed to being north of it. So that, combined with the Birmingham, gives us that 187 feet of separation from the closest point of building A to the homes to the north. Next slide, please. Similarly, on the townhome side of it, residential-for-sale, we're now in the northeast quadrant of the community, um, we had seven parking spots here, um, we did obviously speak to some of our neighbors, and we understood there was some concern with that, um, relative, in particular, the headlights coming down here, um, and the people parking and the noise associated with it. Our first attempt was, if you recall, our landscape plan was to pretty heavily buffer this, which was a, a good first attempt, but again, based on feedback, we thought we could do better. So if you go to the next slide, please, you'll notice that we eliminated that parking entirely. Now, we can't eliminate the road, because unfortunately, people need to get into their homes and into our driveways, but it's not gonna be anyone short of who's living there. Uh, it won't be neighbors, it won't be guests, it won't be someone living way over here that wants to park the car over there, so we eliminated that parking, which will substantially impact, uh, what would have been headlights and, and parking and noise at that quadrant of the site. Next slide, please. This is probably one of the larger positive deviations to the project, our previous submission, this is, this is that main connector road that, that runs north and south of the community, we did have a building that reflected three units sitting here, um, we didn't, ultimately, if you go to the next slide, not necessarily eliminate the units entirely in the community, the community's still made up of 103 units, but we were able to flex the site a little bit, and ultimately create a pocket park, um, which one, I think is gonna be much more aesthetically pleasing going up and down this road, um, but because there is connectivity through sidewalks and whatnot to the north, this is a park that everyone can now enjoy. So instead of it being fronted by homes, it now creates a pocket park, we haven't gone too far in the programming, certainly as we go through site plan, we like to solicit feedback of what that park should look like, that's a great place for either heritage or education or whatnot, some of the items that were in the, um, planner's report. Next slide, please. And here is really hard to demonstrate, you know, in a visual, that would have been easy to see, um, but we did complete a new survey of the trees, um, back in November, coming off this meeting, to make sure we were accurately depicting what was happening on-site, um, and ultimately, what we were able to do is between the tree survey, and then ultimately repositioning several buildings, the amenity building, some of the residential-for-sale townhomes, and the apartment buildings, we were able to increase the number of trees that we were able to save, which was outlined in the planner's report. So that was a key focus of ours, to, to move some things around to hopefully, you know, save trees. And then open space, but by deleting the 84 parking spots between the townhomes and the apartments, um, and then the deleted townhome units fronting on the connector road, um, ultimately able, able to add, you know, almost 6,000 square feet of open space, which increased our open space from just under 51% to 51 and a half percent, which, in a residential development, that's essentially a, a pretty urban-suburban setting, that's actually a substantial amount of open space. So, ultimately, like you said, there was lots of small changes to the plan, we, we didn't wanna bore everybody with details, um, but those were, in our minds, you know, the major deviations from where we were before to where we are today. And you have myself here, as well as Nick Prino with Pomeroy Living, and Jim here with PEA Engineering, if you have...
Do they have anything to add, or?
Uh, we, we also have our traffic consultant from Row, our architect Mark Evanath from Bogart, so their questions about architectural details. questions about architectural details or specifics on the traffic study. We just thought it'd be helpful to have them here if there's technical questions that we couldn't answer.
Okay. Well, I'll, you folks can sit down and I'll.
If I may?
Yeah, sure.
One item, the fire department.
Yes.
That review letter was based on our first submittal. Mark Aberneth, they had a conversation, they had a meeting with the fire marshal. Like, I believe we have worked out those issues.
Okay, great.
Between the driveways, and he was comfortable after we had met with him.
Good.
Okay.
All right, and then I'll, as soon as you folks sit down, I'll open up the meeting for public comment. Thank you. And again, as mentioned before, we don't allow applauding, booing, anything. We want people to feel comfortable speaking before us, not feel intimidated in any way. It's an open discussion. We're all here to hear varying opinions. When you do step up to the podium, remember to sign your name, because that will help the recording secretary here in putting the minutes together. So, please remember to do that. So, with that, you can start lining up whoever wishes to speak. Before us, you have three minutes.
This is to Alex. I noticed that.
Yeah, he's not going to answer the questions right now. We're taking notes, and then we'll present all the questions at once.
Okay.
Because we could hear the same question over and over.
The far northeast corner of your development, of the townhouses, your berm does not, it's two houses short of the last two houses on Spicer and one on Waverly. I'd like to know why you haven't finished that berm all the way to the end, and is this in lieu of the fence now? And I don't see where you've addressed any of the density issues that you were supposed to address. So, that's all. Thank you.
Oh, great, thank you. Next person.
Nancy Tavinsky, and I live on East Side Drive. In fact, I'm the first house, 1925, that's on that corner, was the foreman's house. East Side Drive is, it's, well, it's an ice rink sometimes in the winter, and it's a mud bowl in the spring. We frequently have trucks stuck in my front yard or my neighbor's front yard. There's not supposed to be delivery trucks on East Side Drive. Nobody enforces it. With this added traffic, with the condition of East Side, we, two summers ago, I believe, did a petition for a tax assessment to pave this subdivision. We turned it down. We said, no. With this, and the added traffic, and the mud, and the ice, and the ditches, East Side Drive floods up to the sidewalk, and the sidewalk heaves, because it does just the way East Side Drive was. With the traffic we have now, it's a problem. Nobody enforces it. There's nothing we can do. They say, we'll call the police. Well, there's a, you know, a lumber truck stuck in my front yard. We'll call the police. That's not going to help. My thing is, how is this going to be addressed? And in three years, am I going to be assessed to pave it? Because with all the density, with all the traffic, you may say, sir, that everyone's going to use the other exit to go to the freeway or go to commerce. People that want to live in Plymouth Township, want Plymouth. They want downtown. That, that's where, you know, we, people are going to go, they're going to walk there, they're going to, you know, drive there, because they want to be down there. That goes right in front of all my neighbors, who I feel very sorry for, because a lot of them couldn't afford the tax assessment, and that's why I voted against it. Who's going to maintain this? It went from, it's going to be a gated thing, or emergency exit only, there's going to be a gate there, there's going to be a lock there, there's going to be a this there, or no, we're going to put a sign. Well, now, that completely went out the window. How are you going to stop the basic problem that East Side Drive is a, love it, but it's cow path? Well, those are my concerns, and my concerns are not for myself and my property. I'll do just fine. My concerns are for my neighbors. They're very small houses, they're very limited income. They're very decent people that moved there and have lived there and have invested in this community for very good reason, and I want them taken care of. That's all I have to say.
So, let me ask you a quick question, if I may, just on that. So, did you turn it down because you didn't want it or didn't want to have to pay for it?
Well, for me, it was, it was under 11,000, so for me, it wasn't that big an issue.
A lot of money.
Well, it's a, I mean, but there are people, there are 780 square foot houses. Have you seen them? You know, our road floods up to our sidewalk. I mean, it's going to heave. Now, you're going to have all this on it, is there's no design, there's no improvement, there's no anything else going in? What are going to happen to my friends and neighbors when this road is not only a labrea tar pit of mud, right after it is a skating? We, we put our shovels out, do we not? We put our shovels out by our mailboxes and wave as they go slide, slide. You know, we shovel people out on East Side Drive. It's not, you know, it's, the curve there from the industrial drive says no delivery trucks. They get stuck in their yard all the time.
I'm going to test that. I have a problem with that road.
Well, we have to move on, because we've gone past, way past the three.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
You made your point, and we appreciate it.
I am the Lorax. I speak for the people.
Okay. Next person.
Hi, everyone. My name's Ashley. I also live on East Side Drive. I live right next to Nancy, across the street from Amanda and Connor. The primary issue that I'm seeing with this new development is the damage it's going to be doing to the road. I actually pulled up a zoning map just as we were sitting here, and General Drive, or General Drive is actually not zoned as an industrial drive. It is zoned as residential. I pulled it up on the map. I can show you guys if you'd like. The industrial part goes up to about McCullough. All the rest is actually residential. So, you guys will be moving traffic towards a residential area, and as Nancy stated, the road can't handle that. It's a dirt road. Every day, I see semi trucks getting stuck in Amanda and Connor's yard. They have to back up and try to reroute themselves, just because it, the area where McCullough is, off of General Drive, where that big complex is, that is where the industrial trucks are picking things up, and they are only supposed to be using General Drive. We have at least one semi truck come through every day. Today, we had a big lumber semi truck come through at 1:49 PM. They wreck our road, and that, this whole complex is going to make not only that truck traffic worse with the building, but also, it's going to make all of the traffic for residential much, much worse. Our road cannot handle it. As was stated, we did not want the road paved, at least I can speak for our household. We did not want that entire area paved. We prefer it dirt. It's fine as it is, because there's not a lot of traffic coming through right now. So, I would like to know how we're going to prevent the traffic from coming to East Side Drive, because right now, slanting that area where they can and cannot come out of that, onto General is supposed to prevent people from coming down East Side. They're still going to turn onto East Side, and as you were saying, when people are going to work, if they come down, they're going to turn right onto East Side Drive and take that right to the expressway to Ann Arbor Trail. It's not going to prevent anyone from going down that road. Currently, we have two no trucks on road signs, one on General Drive, because it is zoned as residential, not industrial. There is currently a no truck on road sign there, and there is currently a no truck on road sign on East Side Drive, and they still come through. So, I want to know how that's going to be prevented and how our road is going to be salvaged.
Thank you. Next person.
Good evening. My name is James Davidson. I've lived on East Side Drive, right at the corner of Furwood and East Side, for 16 years. I have an 11-year-old daughter and a five-year-old son, and I think, I understand this meeting is about the PUD improvement, or approval of the PUD. So, I wanted to draw attention to item six on the PUD, which is, "Traffic will not be hazardous or adversely impact abutting properties." I happen to be one of those abutting properties, a little further away than, than right next to it, but, you know, there are, I counted today, there are eight families with children on East Side Drive. There are 13 kids that live on that road. I looked up the average density of houses, or how many people who live in Plymouth Township per house, and it's 2.4. That means we're going to put about 900 people in this development. Now, I don't know if any of you guys have driven through Plymouth Township when there's a train, okay? People are going to take any way possible to get around the train. We used to have Southworth and Gold Arbor. The township wisely, in my opinion, decided that when that development took place, to stop those roads from going through, so that people would not use those roads as throughways. Now, we're creating a throughway. I don't understand the logic behind it. If there's not enough access out onto Ann Arbor Road, then reduce the number of people in the development. And I understand that's not what the developers want to do. I've worked in construction, so I understand that, but if there's too many people in the development, then to, to only have one exit onto Ann Arbor Road, then we need to reduce the amount of people in the development, because my neighborhood is a neighborhood. You said, I heard you say today, onto the industrial drive. There's 19 houses.
Oh, yes.
On that road, okay? So, so, it's not industrial drive. It's not my, not my road, but it's my neighbors, and I care about them, and that's why I'm here. I, I would suggest that developers find a way to not route traffic up into East Side Drive. I, I am not a NIMBY, I look, I like the trails. I, I like them, my kids love them, but I always figured something was going to go there, right? And that's fine, but it doesn't need to have my neighborhood as an additional way into the, you know, 900 people every day going to downtown Plymouth. I don't care if they walk through, sidewalks are great, but I just don't want them driving through every day when my kids are out playing, and, and, you know, we got kids all over that neighborhood. So, that's all.
Thank you for coming out. Next person.
I live on Michael Drive, which is the middle there, and I'm one of the middle houses on the south side, and I know you think you're going to direct them all up General Drive, but when it gets backed up on General Drive, like the exit part, and there's a train because of that, Ann Arbor Trail will be backed up, so if there's a few cars waiting to turn left there, they're just going to go down Michael and out East Side. So, you can think you're going to direct traffic that way, but like, it's kind of hard to do that unless you have like an actual fence there. So, did the traffic study actually look at how it impacted us up here? Because if the traffic study originally was just Ann Arbor Trail and everything, Ann Arbor Road, but then this is their answer, it needs a little bit of this, for how many cars are we going down this? Also, for Ann Arbor Road, will it increase the traffic at the intersections? They said a yes, but like, there's a bunch of school buses on Lily that move out, and there's a school there. Is that going to impact that negatively with all the extra traffic at those intersections? I mean, I don't have any kids in school, but I just see like that backing up even more around when kids are getting out. I try to avoid driving that time. And I'm 24, so I just don't see anything about the greenery that's great. I don't think these kind of gated, like, social exclusion communities are really like the future of the township. Even if we had streets that went through, more of them, traffic would be reduced. Like, you should know that gridways are the best, but making it for us, just because this development doesn't want to be too congested, we're just going to get the worst of it. So, I think for that many people, like the guy before me said, around 900, they, two exits, two entrances, that's not even enough. They almost need more than that, and I don't think this area is appropriate for them. It's just too small, there's not enough options with that. And also, I'm really worried that in New Jersey, and sure, it's not Michigan Toll Brothers, but they're all under the same big company, in New Jersey, they're doing a development, and the citizens say it's a dust bowl. Like, they weren't spraying down all the dust properly, and every time they complained, they'd kind of do it, and then that's it. And I already live on a dirt road, so I'm picturing all these trucks coming in, breaking up the road even more while they're doing construction, and then I'm just living in a dust bowl. And it is an industrial site, so then I'm going to be worried, what am I breathing in? I don't see how that helps anyone in the community around us at all. And again, like I said, the greenery, it's great, you guys are adding it. I don't think it's going to help any of the animals there, really. We get deer in my neighborhood, I get possums, all that. They're just going to leave that one. So, and again, it's not my greenery. I'm not part of that community. They're not even going to be my neighbors. I won't consider them neighbors, so.
Thank you. Next person.
First of all, I just wanted to say thank you for allowing us time as residents to speak, and I know it's a tough job. I've lived in Plymouth for 30 years. My kids grew up here, and I'm just really proud to live here, and grateful that you're hearing our voices. Like probably most people in this room, I'm just very concerned, mostly with the high density of this unit. We know that property doesn't sit vacant forever, as much as we love the nature, the animals, everything that comes with it. It has to be developed, but I just firmly believe, and I've come to all the meetings, I've read all the materials, I've read your huge packet, that there are other options, that to do a PUD, to me, the biggest issue comes down to density. I agree with the 900 cars, the studies that the developers have shown us, it's not feasible. It only takes living in this area, driving on these roads. I'm just so shocked beyond words that they've moved it to Ann Arbor Trail. Please, just drive the roads during rush hour. It's coming right through our neighborhoods. I don't live on General Drive, I live on Southworth, and I'm just so sad. I would like to address a question on page 17 or 18 of your packet. It references Gold Arbor and Southworth. It's page 18, items one and seven.
Which report is this?
Uh, it was in your packet that was on the.
The engineers report?
It was the letter that came out from, I forget the name of the company, yes.
Yeah, right here. Here it is.
Yep. Yep, that's what I really do. But on that, on items one and seven, it talks about Southworth and Gold Arbor. I'm assuming they mean the current entrance that the Elks Club uses, but the way that's worded, I questioned it once in one of the earlier meetings, it makes it sound as though they're going to loop it into Southworth and Gold Arbor, and I would really like clarity on that. I lived on the street when it was a racetrack, and people did go through, and we were very grateful that the township looped Gold Arbor and Southworth, so that we don't have that. The traffic was dangerous and very unsafe. Trust me, it's just a straight shot. So, just wanted to be sure that whatever they end up doing with this, that it is not linked to the horseshoe. And then, I just appeal to you and respectfully ask that you look at other options. This isn't the only developer that would be interested in this land. The density is just too much for our area. Amazon, you've got the new health complex, the new development over on Mill Street. Our roads are already congested, and we live here, we all avoid it. Please don't do this to us, please. Smaller condo complex, residential housing, even the original plan of the developer, the senior complex, would have had less density on our roads. And so, that's my concern, and I just appeal to you, you know, envision if you lived in this neighborhood yourself, and I just ask you to vote no on this high-density proposal. Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming out. Next person.
Hi, good evening. My name is Michelle, and I am a resident on General Drive. I've lived in Plymouth for 20 years, and I sent a very lengthy email, so I'm sorry to the person who has to read it later, but I'm going to read from that email to summarize my thoughts.
Excuse me, who did you send the email to?
I sent it to the planning, the general planning email.
Oh, okay. When did you send it?
Uh, at one-thirty today.
Okay, but you're gonna read it now?
Yes, I'm, I'm gonna read a portion of it now.
Okay, okay.
Cause it's long, it's gonna, it's gonna pass my three minutes.
Okay.
Um, so as someone previously mentioned, right now, based off of the packet that was sent out, it looks like it was approximately three-hundred-and-seventy-three homes, which would likely result in nearly a thousand new residents. Um, per the township of Plymouthing, Plymouth zoning ordinance, uh, the proposed pod must not gen- generate traffic that adversely impacts adjacent properties or conflict with normal traffic flow of the general area, including the flow of pedestrians and at major intersections. And frankly, this proposal fails to do so. Reading, uh, an excerpt from the actual proposal, um, it refers to the north side exit. "The northern access, quote, 'the northern access point currently meets the existing road at an angled orientation, which encourages exiting cars to use General Drive over Eastside Drive. This is a desirable arrangement because, quote, Glendale Drive," which I'm assuming refers to General Drive, "is largely industrial and institutional, and as such, more capable of absorbing additional traffic." Um, I'd just like to voice my concern that, one, General Drive is not largely industrial. We have one industrial building, and the rest is residential. Um, and thank you to whoever earlier pointed out, I believe it was you, that it's not even an, an industrial road, that it's not zoned that way. So the additional traffic to General Drive would be very concerning. Um, and realistically, it's not going to, it's not gonna prevent traffic to Eastside Drive either. The, the angle of the road is not going to encourage people to go either way. Um, so I have very significant concerns for the traffic to our neighborhood. Um, and I, I also just have concerns in regards to the traffic for Ann Arbor Road, especially with the new development that we have with Amazon, with the Henry Ford Health System. Ann Arbor Road is going to continue to get congested, and I understand the northern exit was to combat that, but it is going to be at the mercy of the residents of that neighborhood. So, thank you. So as a result, um, I ask that you continue to hear the voices and the concerns of the residents, and please turn down this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person?
Hi, um, my name's Kathy. I've been, um, in Plymouth here for twenty-one years. And, um, could you do the, the map view without the satellite, just the roads? And can you pan down to show Ann Arbor Trail and Riverside Drive? Yes, right there. Um, we talk about walkability and building sidewalks and the extra traffic through here. Now, I live up Riverside Drive, and Heinz Drive is two, two blocks in. If you have nine-hundred people, kids, cars, bikes, you're gonna have more pedestrians going across there, in addition to the additional cars coming out of General and Eastside. I think the traffic people need to take a look at that, if this is gonna go through, and it's a reason with the current configuration, is to not do it. It's gonna be causing some traffic problems there. There's no stoplights, it's all stop signs, and that's gonna be a problem too, for people's safety. So, and again, I'll reiterate the density, I think it's too much for that area. If it was all townhomes, rather than the apartments, I think the apar- the apartments are always pushing it over the edge. If it was a townhome, it might be okay. Then it's the extra cars would be okay, I think is the.
Is there a sidewalk on Riverside that goes down into Heinz Drive?
Both, yes, on both sides.
Both sides?
There's no, there's no crosswalk.
There's no crosswalk, no. Right, and it's a jog, right, it's a jog. It's, right, it's a little bit crooked, right? So if there's additional, additional traffic coming out of the new development, going across to go to there, it's gonna be some definite saves and safety issues up there. And reconfiguring, you talk about reconfiguring the entry at Gold Arbor, well, I think they need to look at that as well. So, all right, thanks.
Thank you.
Hi. Hi, uh, my name's Megan, and I, uh, live on Gold Arbor. And, uh, I've, uh, I just have a couple concerns, um, I mean echoing, you know, the density. Like, um, the first woman said, the, you know, the strain on our resources, um, even, I think someone was asking about water pressure, s- you know, schools, um, how that all fits in. Um, and certainly, like, the traffic. Uh, I'd kind of like to see the studies of, you know, what was, what was the study for, um, going north, going south, going both ways? You know, what, what were the, the ratings, uh, of those, of those studies? Taking in consideration the train and people speeding through, um, particularly if it's an ice rink, um, or a mud pit, um, it's not gonna be good. Um, also, the fire reports, I was interested in hearing about that. I don't know if that, we're gonna hear about the fire reports. I know the, uh, one fella said, "Oh, they've been addressed," but I wanna know what the fire marshal was concerned about in the first place and how they fixed it. Um, and then, you know, I, uh, I have to say it, cause it's my na- it's my nature, but, you know, it's not, I totally appreciate the trees. And I applaud the effort for your little pocket park and everything, but I think it's not necessarily, it's the loss of the trees, but it's also the loss of the natural area as a whole. Um, leaving how, you know, for the, uh, like, there's a pair of owls that have been there for years. And, you know, they're gonna, uh, leave, uh, you know, deer, fox, all of that. So, um, I totally appreciate all the trees and, and thank you for that. Yeah, um, I guess that's just my thoughts.
Okay, thank.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Joan Whitty, and I live on Gold Arbor. And I just wanna reiterate what Kathy said, and I wasn't sure, reading the reports, if there was a traffic study on Ann Arbor Trail at all, back in those neighborhoods. That, that wasn't clear to me, but it was kinda hard to read the report for me, cause that's not my area of expertise. But on Riverside Drive, there are a lot of people from our neighborhoods who go down there to go to Heinz Park, to bike ride, to run, to jog. And there is no crosswalk, as she said, so it would be great if they would consider something like Mill Street, where you, you know, punch a button and slow it down. You actually can't see the cars coming, it's just a little bit of a curve. So, um, I think that that is definitely a pedestrian issue. Secondly, uh, people who live on, um, that side of Lily, on the east side of Lily, when there is a train, you can sit there and watch everybody turn around, myself included, if we've really gotta get somewhere, to go down to Hagerty, to loop around, go downtown. So, I mean, on the other side, everybody does it with Fairground. So, I mean, it's very realistic to think everybody's just gonna shoot down General Drive or Eastside to hit the road, go out to Ann Arbor Road to get where they're going. I mean, it's just how we are as people. So, um, I don't, I don't know what else you can do about those kinds of things, but most of us actually don't go to Ann Arbor Road to get an expressway because of the traffic. The people I know in my neighborhood, we talk about it, we go down Ann Arbor Trail Road to Eccles and Livonia, and loop around and go up that way. It's faster, actually, much faster, and a whole lot safer. So, especially when Amazon and the Health System. And I understand the grocery store goes in by LA Fitness, so, just a lot of im- impacts, so. Um, so that's, my questions are really, have those things really been looked at?
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Travis, I live on Waverly Drive.
Did, did you sign in?
Uh, oh, yeah.
Thank you. It makes the recording secretary's job a whole lot easier.
I live on Waverly, which is the north, north end of the development, and, um, I see that the project timeline is for five years, so I'm just, wanna understand, um, what the controls and, and how it's, uh, uh, monitored for dust, as, as the young woman said, and noise during those five years. It's a, a lengthy time to kinda be that close to the development and the construction, so I'm curious if there's what the control of the house, house. I share also the same thoughts and concerns that everyone else has voiced.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for coming in. Okay, we've heard a lot about, uh, an important issue here from everyone. Uh, so I think that point has been made. So if you're back up here again to, uh, continue those comments, that's, that's okay. We prefer some new thoughts, but also, what would you propose as an alternative? Uh, because that's what we would have to try to figure out ourselves, so it would make our job easier as well. So the next person, we're ready for you? Yes, please sign in.
My name's Chelsea, I live on Waverly as well. I apologize, I wasn't here for all of this, so I don't want to repeat anything that's been said. But I feel deceived by the developers more than anything at this point. At first, they came in, "Oh, we're trying to be good neighbors, good neighbors," and it's gotten worse. The last, the most recent one I've seen was worse. Um, I got a notice in the mail, the most recent meeting, I think it was November, um, that said they had to note, notify all the neighbors by for the meeting date. My postage, my mail was, uh, dated the day after the meeting. So I don't feel like they're totally following everything they need to be. I feel like this meeting was not known. It was through neighbors that we found out, not through, like, a public forum. Um, so I guess if that is a different point, that I feel very deceived by them. I don't feel like they're being honest. I think it's gotten worse and worse. I understand you're in a business and you're trying to make money, um, but that's at the expense of our quality of life and our living situation right now. I am not here to argue the trees, the animals, yes, I'd rather have that than buildings, but I don't wanna live on Ford Road. That's why we're in Plymouth. I don't wanna live in Birmingham. That's why I, I obviously have a lot of children. We love the neighborhood. We love Plymouth, cause it's small and quaint, and we can walk to stuff, not because there's building after building after. Have you been to Birmingham lately? It's horrible, and I want nothing to do with that. Um, something like this would make me really consider, are we gonna stay in this neighborhood? And I, I wanna raise my kids in this neighborhood. I love our neighborhood, I love our neighbors, and I don't think this is a fit. One of the first things they said in the Zoom meeting we had over the summer was, "There's nothing like this." There is apartment building after condo complex after new development all over the area. If you want an apartment in Plymouth, walking to town, you have one. If you want a condo, there's a policy development on Mill Street. There are, how many new buildings on, is it not Plymouth Road? Plymouth Road, just about walking distance, maybe a point-two further than this development would be from walking to town. You can find apartments, you can find condos, you can find housing walkable to Plymouth. We don't need this development, and that's just my point. I, if, if you want a solution, I think the only solution is significantly smaller. And I'm not talking about twenty units smaller, I'm talking about half the size. Personally, I'd rather have industrial, if that's what it's zoned for right now. Those people are gonna come in for work Monday through Friday and leave at the end of the day. Three-hundred-and-seventy-two units, coming and going all day, that's gonna be worse than Ford Road. They're large homes, there's large condos, that's several cars per home, and I do not want that traffic period. So that's, I don't wanna speak for everyone, but I don't think we have a disagreement that, the size. I know some people are more concerned about animals and trees and that, but as a whole, it's way too big. And that's all I have to say, and thank you for being patient with all of us.
Well, that's okay. You're, you're a brave person to come in, I'll tell ya. Okay.
Hello, my name is Thomas Frido. I live in Plymouth since twenty-two years. And what I really like about Plymouth Township is the small houses and the nice neighborhoods. We, I actually don't live in the area, but my daughter lives there, because we own the house. Uh, she lives there, and that is on General Drive. This is a small house, and I think it's, uh, a perfect starter, small house. They're, also, they're affordable. The houses which were offered by the company here, which they wanna build, they gonna start with four-hundred thousand. I know that the prices go up here everywhere, but I think the pr- uh, the houses and the living opportunities for four-hundred thousand, there are already quite a few available uh, in this surrounding area. I think it would be a better proposal to consider about smaller houses, maybe with more garden, with more land. I, that is what I liked so much here in Plymouth, that you have a nice ratio. I mean, Plymouth is called the, the city of trees, no, but we are closing everything more and more up. My house I live in, as well as even the small house my daughter lives in, has about a ratio of maybe twenty-five percent house, and the rest is yard, land-free area, with trees and, uh, areas for the, uh, for the animals. Because it is smaller, it would also be more affordable for a young family to start doing something with. And a young family doesn't necessarily need the luxury homes with all the extras. And I think it would be much better suited if this area would be used for this purpose. Yeah, it would be significantly less units. But currently, if we look at the ratio, if I just visually scale it up, the building density is double of what it is around General Drive and East Drive. And I don't think it's necessary, and I think that there would, it is, would be much more appealing to people, really to also build the community, to make smaller, one-family homes in this area in the size where maybe you can get something for three-hundred thousand, not four-hundred, four-hundred-and-fifty, or pay rent for a small apartment with thirteen-hundred dollars a month. I mean, I know that everything, uh, goes up, but this is quite a bit in commitment, and it's, an apartment, people would move out relatively, because they're going there for a little bit, and then they move out. You don't get a community as you get with a neighborhood, the way you have it right now. I, I don't live there, but we have already, we do have good connections with the neighbors to both areas, although I don't live there. And it's all around this area, and I think it is very, it, this would be a better idea than the proposal we have right now.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Hi, everybody, thanks for coming out tonight. It's great to see so many of my, my neighbors here. Um, I, I live over in the Waverly Village subdivision over here that kinda backs up the Eastside area. I've lived in this general area at a different place, liked the area so much, tried to find a house in the same area. So I've been up and down Ann Arbor Trail, that area, for twenty years. I've run and biked and walked my dog and, and all kinds of things, and the traffic on Ann Arbor Trail has grown significantly in that twenty years. When there's a train, as many people have brought up, the, the traffic, I can see it from my house, so I know not to go that way. I come out and I go down Ann Arbor Trail. Um, there's a, there's a condo development, uh, right over here. Can you just pull down a little bit to where Pinewood is? Um, come down, the other way, bring it down towards me, pull it to the, that one is the north side.
Which way?
Yeah, they have a little aisle in that driveway. Those of you who walk that street, you've seen the cars whip, whip through there. I'd like, I'd like to meet the guy that lives in that house, just to the west. He's probably the best guy to tell ya. The speed and the number of cars, that when soon as they come around that curve and see a train, they whip through that Pinewood parking lot. They don't care about me and my wife, walking our dog, they don't care about the kids on the bikes. They don't care about the kids on the bikes. They don't care about the strollers. You can encourage people as much as you want. They're going to come down all those streets, General, Eastside, they'll cut across my call. It stays in 20 seconds. Okay, all over this township over at 275 and Ann Arbor Road, we have no turn-on red signs. I go through that intersection every day. That's a law, not an encouragement, it's a law that's blown through daily. I see 10 cars a day blow that while I'm sitting at the lane. That neighborhood can't take that traffic. The other thing we talk about a lot is density, density, density. Although they proposed, yes, they have what, 11 or 12 per acre and they could have 35. That would be fantastic in a four-acre, 44-unit project. This is a 34-acre project with 373 units. That's a lot of people. That's a lot of people. I don't know what to do about that, except reduce the density. Single-family homes. If you took our neighborhood here, Waverly, looked at the acreage that we take up and built that same-sized house and yard, you'd get about 130 on this 34-acre plot. I don't think we'd have a problem with 130 cars or residences, say 200 cars, coming out on Ann Arbor Road every day. The problem is we're more than twice that. This is our issue. It's not the density, it's the total number. You want to take three acres and put in 33 units? We're probably cool with that. The problem is nearly 400 units. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thanks for here, Nest, and thank you, everybody, for coming out. If nothing else, this has definitely brought our community together a lot. Not to echo what's been said, I'd like to just point out a couple of things. We talked about that master plan previously. And definitely you guys took a look at that this time and referenced it multiple times in your huge packet, which we do appreciate. Everything from the trees and that's all acknowledged. However, beyond density not being addressed, just in general, when you read this piece of the master plan that says land use patterns and transportation systems are inherently interconnected, proximity to efficient and connected transportation networks is a primary factor in determining where new developments occur. However, the traffic generated from a new development often exceeds the capacity of transportation systems and traffic becomes more congested. It is important that the land use, planning and transportation systems are coordinated and for the transportation system to allow individuals to get around not only by car, but also by walking, bicycling and other means. And you guys have done a great job talking about your path around there and path potentially under the railroad, and those are wonderful. But we're creating a problem. So as I went through the entire packet and I looked specifically at the Spalding and Decker whole evaluation or reevaluation of the traffic study, it starts out with saying, "A review of the traffic impact study, blah, 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 373 units, again, same numbers, trip generation." If you go to number two, it says, "The land use description for low-rise multifamily housing does not include the proposed 103-unit townhouses. This land use is 250 single-family attached housing." If you continue on through this, what I'm asking the planning commission to do is read through this, two, three, four, five, six, all of these things show indiscretions in this report, in the traffic study. I don't understand how the review of it makes it just acceptable. Also, Ann Arbor Trail specifically states in number six that Ann Arbor Trail is a coordinated MDOT trunk line. That means that we can't decide what changes are going to occur, whether it's a traffic light or whatever, it has to be approved through MDOT. And it continues to go on to say, has this even been discussed with MDOT as a feasible improvement to implement? So if you continue on through this, I'd be happy to share all my highlighted information with you, because I went through every single piece and there are so many questions that come out when you read through this.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Uh, hello. I currently do not live in Plymouth, but I will be soon. I currently live in an apartment complex. It's pretty much the exact model and make of what all this company is doing, but a much different company, just as large, just as noisy. And for the traffic that enters in and out of it, I'd like to see where you get the traffic statistics from and who you interviewed and what kind of stats you guys pull up, because I currently, the units I currently live in, anytime of day, it can be 4:00 AM, 4:00 PM, Monday, Tuesday, Sunday, Saturday, doesn't matter. There is traffic in and out waiting for me to get out of my parking lot to get onto a main road, just like Ann Arbor Trail. An Ann Arbor Trail is not a main road. I do not currently see how they can even think about using General, Michael, Furwood and Eastside as exit points when it's a dirt road. Right now, you will probably have for 900 unit, or if 900 people, apartment unit, you will not be able to get out of there within five minutes. In my current apartment complex, which is one of the biggest reasons I'm leaving, there's always cars backing up waiting to leave and they have a yellow turn lane, so that people can wait to turn in and out of the road. This street up here onto Ann Arbor Trail where you exit does not have a yellow turn lane. You will be stuck there. There's a train less than a quarter mile away that gets, that comes in every single day. People are always stuck there. There's also a church right there, Wednesdays and Sundays, after church service. What is the plan to not get in their way? Should people have to find a new church just because of the Toll Brothers want to build an apartment complex here? So I know we talked about the density and the traffic and that's the biggest issue. Their issue is, I currently live by a Toll Brothers development. They have nothing but issues. The constant dust, the noise, they're behind schedule, their trucks do not follow local road signs, the companies they partner with. This is not a Michigan thing, this is not a Plymouth thing. This is a state and nationwide issue with Toll Brothers. They're constantly being talked about by the people that live in those areas as being a terrible business development. As a young lady said, she was deceived. This is what Toll Brothers has done in the past and has always done. The current area that I live in that has a development right by it is in West Bloomfield. As you know, very affluent area, very large neighborhoods. Houses $500,000. They can't even afford to pay their employees the correct amount of money to build a damn sign that says, "No trucks here." They do not follow these signs. Toll Brothers is a massive conglomerate of construction and realty and business development that does not care about the people that live in their current developments or the people that have even lived in the areas surrounding them. They do not care about the towns. They just want to build the area they live in and then just move out and move on to their next area. They will, that's why they said, the young lady said that, it doesn't matter who they send out these emails to and plans to, they will not follow them. They have not followed them. They get confined constantly by every local and state government that they operate in. And I just want to leave on that.
Okay, next person.
Thank you, everybody. My name is Bill Dyer. I've been, my family's been Plymouth residents for our entire life. My father was the principal of Good Council. My grandmother was president of the, head of the Vivians there at the Elks Club. My grandfather was an Elks Club member. My sister lives right there at the corner of Pinewood and Ann Arbor Trail. My other sister lives right here at the corner of Southworth and Ann Arbor Trail. I was lucky enough, the good Lord made it halfway decent. I walk here tonight. I live on Furwood, just east of Hagerty Road. So as you know, I have my own issues that I'm dealing with right now with just the noise, the construction, traffic on 275. I lived in the house over there before 275 was even here. So my family has been in Plymouth our entire lives. My grandparents are buried up there over in Riverside Cemetery, including my mother and father up there too as well. I have no stake in any of this here tonight, except for to support all my neighbors. My entire family lives here. I consider all of you neighbors. And as you know, we always, in my family, we just call ourselves Plymouth people. And I think people that are sitting here know what Plymouth people mean. And I don't have any, I'm not going to beat a dead horse about the density, which, you know, I deal with every day with all the trucks, cars, Amazon things. And I'm concerned about that healthcare facility opening right around the corner from me. I hear noise all day long, it's construction, traffic, noise, cars, airplanes, trains, everything. My only question is just to the people on the planning committee, which is, I'm not quite sure why you would approve this. Like, I sit here and I listen to all these residents that live over here on Waverly. They live on General, Spicer, Gold Arbor, Southworth. And I just question like, why do we need this development here? We don't really need this. Like, my family has lived here our entire life because we love Plymouth, we're Plymouth people, and we've always appreciated and respected our neighbors and always been a great community to live in, for a million different reasons. I just don't know why we need this. I'm not even going to talk about the density of it, the amount of the 370-some office homes or residences. I don't really know why we need that. Our taxes are low. Our quality of life is high. We don't really need this. And I'm concerned like, are we just going to be selling off vacant parcels of property and building massive facilities in here, massive townhouses and apartments? Like, there's no reason for it. We don't have to have it. We know when 300 and some facilities move in there that the traffic is going to increase everywhere. People are going to take shortcuts coming out of there if they propose like having that opening right there to General. They're going to come down here past my house on Ann Arbor Trail on Hagerty. I'm going to get more people whipping by my house. I walk around here all the time. I'm just concerned that the reason we're doing this is not the reason that we need to be doing this for. I'm just concerned that we're doing this for what purpose? For what reason? We have enough traffic, we have enough homes. We have, like that young lady said earlier, we have apartments out on Plymouth Road. We have the places on Mill Street. We have apartments in downtown Plymouth that I see are for sale. We have available housing everywhere. I don't understand why we need that many places in that small of a space right there. Thank you for your time and all you do. And good luck to everybody here too as well.
Okay, well, we've been at this for an hour. So, you know, I'm not closing off, but I, really, I don't think we need to hear anymore about the traffic going up through the, you know.
Why so would you not hear more about that? The issue, I mean, that seems...
Well, we've heard it. And I think it's, and I know for myself, and I'm sure others feel the same way, it's a very important issue. So you've raised it on all our radar. But, you know, how many times do we want to keep hearing it? There's no new information. It would be helpful if somebody would give us an alternative. That would be great.
Well, we're a density question.
Okay. All right.
Once you build it, you can't...
Okay, we're not going to get into that right now. We're going to answer all these, try to answer these questions and where we are, how the decisions are made. So we'll get into that. Hopefully, you'll understand it better, whether it's positive or negative. We don't want to, you know, we don't want you to think that we're just sitting here and just going to make up our own mind. We are trying to follow the ordinance. I mean, they have a right to how they're going to develop their property, just as you have a right to maintain the quality of life you have. That's important to us too. Both sides are important issues to us. And we have to try to balance it. And we're trying to respect both sides. Okay, sir.
Hello, my name is Josh. I don't live in this immediate vicinity, but I do live on the east side over on Ferguson Avenue. I typically walk in this area. Maybe you've seen me in your neighborhood, walking my dog. I do enjoy doing that on the weekends typically. I echo the sentiments of the congestion or the density. I'm someone who has to use the Ann Arbor Road and Hagerty intersection, so obviously that will impact me as well. One of my main concerns is overall the level of development, especially on the east side of town, the tree cover on the east side of town. I absolutely love the trees in this area. And I think it's a real travesty to just basically eliminate quite a lot of them. And I think the proposal doesn't really, it kind of talks about it, but I think more could be done to actually preserve the tree canopy in this area, which would really be nice in terms and reduce the number of parking lots. And I think, and I'll just finish up. I think the critique of the traffic study is kind of damning, in my opinion. So I think that should really be considered as far as whether or not this is approved.
I didn't hear that last comment. Can you repeat it?
The critique of the traffic study that was in the report, I think is pretty damning for this proposal.
I didn't catch the word critique there. All right, thank you.
Sorry.
No problem.
Benjamin Welch?
It's endless. Did you get this revised one?
So I am a resident of this town. And Dennis, you had mentioned about ordinance. So based on, I believe, Michelle, she had mentioned that in that ordinance, it wouldn't suggest any other neighborhoods based upon any developments that are taking place in this community. So right there, you're already going against what's already been written. And when something is written like that, it is prevent things like this from happening in a community that we already enjoy and we want to protect. So for them to keep bringing this up, it is our right to keep voicing the same thing, to make sure that you completely understand the amount of care and passion that we have for this community. So to even make a gesture about us not being able to talk is wrong. And it's wrong for you to be in that position to say that we shouldn't be saying anything. Now, you had brought up the fact that we're building a burn and we're getting rid of a lot of parking places. So when you have a guest that's coming into this community, where are they parking? Where are they going to have somebody that's living in this new community that you're building? Where are they going to park? There's no street parking. You have two parking spaces. You guys are building way beyond the capacity of the size of this lot. It's not right. And it would be wrong, absolutely wrong, for this to be approved. And if you want to talk about what's on the market, there's currently 64 houses that are for sale in the city of Plymouth. We have an average of 12 houses that are hitting the market every week. And that number is increasing. Let's not destroy our community. We have roots here. We have people that are going to be majorly affected by this. That's all I have to say.
Good evening. Mary Ann McLaren. I'm also a member of the Environmental Leadership Commission. And I live over Ann Arbor and Sheldon area. So since everybody's been in the close area of where the development is, I thought somebody outside of the immediate neighborhood needs to speak up. Reminder that the survey that was conducted, the township did, what was it, over 900% residents applied to it. And one of the key things was the kind of rural feel of the township, the open spaces, the green spaces. Somehow, this development just seems to smack the opposite thing. It's just a bunch of buildings stuck somewhere. And I think it's not good for the community as a whole. And just as outside of the area, I want to express that concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing. And just a couple of comments. First of all, I apologize if people got the impression I was trying to cut off comments, because that was not my intent. My intent was, we've heard a lot about the problems up to the north of this development. I appreciate that. I know the vigor that you are opposing this. As I said, you know, we've heard that. And so are there other thoughts? I don't want to close off discussion on other points. So again, my apologies if I misled people. The other thing I wanted to get across to the lady who I think has left, when she talked about the mailings. The mailings, we had the public hearing a couple of months ago. We are required to send out notices to that. Now, if someone gets it late, well, that's the post office's problem. We keep careful records of where those are sent out. This was not a public hearing. There was no requirement to have it. But again, the commission feels that it's important to hear from the residents. We encourage you to come to the... that it's important to hear from the residents. We encourage you to come to the meetings. So, that's why there was no announcement of the meeting. It was publicly posted if people were interested, and I do believe I made that announcement when we did have the public hearing, that there won't be a posting. So, keep your eyes open on the website for that information. And I would ask the applicant to come back up, and I'd ask the engineer, can you expand a little bit about your, the memorandum from Spalding Decker? Because I think there's a lot of confusion on the part of the commission and obviously the residents.
Yeah. I think the first point that I heard was that the 103 units weren't included in the traffic study. That's not true. The comment was related to the land use code. The land use code that they used was 220, which is multifamily housing low-rise. It should have been single-family attached. I believe that's actually going to impact the traffic less than what the current is shown. So, that was just a misconception on whoever brought that up. Though, that traffic is included in the current traffic study. The majority of the traffic study really relates to delay along Ann Arbor Road, especially at the shopping center and at both Hagerty and Lily along Ann Arbor. And it's really getting at the point that without large-level corridor improvements along Ann Arbor, we don't think that that delay can be mitigated. The only way to mitigate that delay is to send that traffic, a portion of that traffic to the north. The traffic to the north, we're not necessarily concerned about Ann Arbor Trail from a capacity standpoint. It's a two-lane county roadway. Same with Hagerty Road. Just for example, I think it's about 6,500 cars on Ann Arbor Trail, and it's 14,800 on Hagerty. Very similar, you know, roads from a county perspective. So, that was really the crux of the report, was just getting into delay. It doesn't really have necessarily anything to do with capacity. Both roadways have plenty of capacity to accept the traffic from the development. It's just delay at the intersections.
Okay, and then the other issue is the density. So, we're guided by the ordinance. So, can you tell us a little bit about what is the maximum density for a PUD and what is, what's being proposed here?
Sure. So, the maximum density for a planned unit development under the PUD ordinance is 35 dwelling units per acre. The planning commission is able to increase that density at its discretion, which does happen for some certain developments that are on very small parcels.
Thirty five, did you say 35 units?
Yeah, 35.
How many acres you got?
This one is about 34 acres, I believe, right? And then this proposed development, where's my page on it?
A thousand.
The proposed development is, I think, close to 11 dwelling units per acre. So, higher than what it would be if it was a single-family residential parcel, although it's not single-family residentially zoned, but lower than what is allowed in the PUD ordinance.
So, what are the, for everybody's benefit, what are the conditions or the rules under which the PUD could be approved or must be approved? In other words, is there a right that the developer has to a PUD?
So, a PUD is discretionary to the township?
Totally discretionary.
The Board of Trustees is the determining body for all PUDs. If it's found to be appropriate, that's where the PUD option is approved, but, you know, if the site plan is insufficient, then the PUD may never go forward.
And the point is to weigh those factors, correct?
Yeah. The point is to determine if the general mix of uses and arrangement and traffic and trees are all in keeping with the PUD option today, not the site plan.
And then what if a PUD is not approved? Then what does that mean for the developer?
By the Board of Trustees, you mean?
Yeah. So, just to kind of walk through this?
Sure.
So, we're all on the same page?
So, if the PUD is, the PUD option is not approved by the Board of Trustees, then the property would either have to go through a rezoning process to pursue some sort of residential development, either propose a different PUD plan, or just build according to the current zoning, which is largely industrial.
So, the planning commission has the discretion to either approve, recommend?
Recommend, yeah, this is not...
Approve or recommend, deny?
Or table.
Or table the application. And then the Board of Trustees ultimately has the final say, and the Board of Trustees has the discretion to either accept the planning commission's recommendation or go off on its own.
Yes.
Generally speaking, you want, the Board of Trustees wants to do what the planning commission advises for a couple of reasons. One is that the planning commission presumably studied it in detail, and second is that the Board of Trustees doesn't really want to go against one of its own commissions unless it really makes sense to do so. So, what we end up will do is either make a recommendation, and then it will ultimately be up to the Board of Trustees to decide. And how long does it take to rise to the Board of Trustees?
It just depends on how much is on the next agenda. It could be as soon as the next meeting.
Yeah, it could be as soon as the next, not the next meeting, because that...
Yeah, February.
The February.
Because we have to, it would be a public hearing, and we'd have to send out the notices in advance.
Right. If the planning commission decided to deny the PUD, could they at the same time recommend to the Board of Trustees that a rezoning be looked at for this particular parcel?
I mean, you can make any recommendation to the board, but it might be outside the scope of this project.
Well, that's my question. I mean, are we overstepping what's really right before us? Because here's my concern, is that it is zone industrial. If this were to be turned down, then there could be an industrial site put there. Could be some...
Everybody likes to say a store.
Less than acceptable, you know, industry moving in, or a real hot item right now in real estate is warehousing. So, could, you know, Amazon come in? They could take all the trees out, because there's nothing to prevent them from doing that. And where someone had mentioned, oh, well, you know, people would come in to work from eight to five. But if it was a distribution center, that's a 24-hour operation. And my concern is for these residents, too, that we don't go, you know, open the door to that possibility. So, if the Board of Trustees denied the application and the developer decided that it wasn't commercially viable to continue forward, then the next subsequent owner of the property could, without having to have a rezoning, could put in an industrial facility so long as it was in compliance with zoning ordinance, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
They don't, they wouldn't need approval to do that.
Yeah, they wouldn't need site plan approval, but not commission.
Right. So, that's the risk. You know, that's the risk.
At least, it's not discretionary. The site plan would come before the commission, but there's no discretion on the use of the land.
Right. At that point, the planning commission cannot say that we don't want this land used in that way, because it's currently zoned that way. So, that's the risk. And personally, I mean, I get it. You guys are the residents, and it's highly dense, and I'm trying to really figure out whether, how we can weigh those interests.
And I should mention, under the draft master plan, which is currently available on the website, if anyone wants to comment on it, the land is slated to be, as I said, mixed residential and commercial. So, when that plan is adopted, a rezoning of the land might be feasible, but at present, the current master plan has it slated to continue to be industrial, which means a rezoning will be hard to pursue until the next master plan is adopted.
Right. Because you wouldn't do a rezoning that would contradict the master plan?
Yeah. That's never viable.
Yeah. And if we contradict the master plan, it weakens the township's ability to fight potential developers that want to put something in that might be in opposition to the master plan, because it's the way you did it over here, why can't I get it? So, there's a lot of risks here, a lot of things that, pieces that are moving around and trying to figure out how to respect everybody, you know, residents, the developer, what's best for the township. We're concerned about, you know, putting you folks at risk too for these other less optical kinds of developments. Anyone else have a comment on this?
I agree with Bob. Bob's concerned here. All you have to do is go on the other side of the railroad tracks there and look at that. That's zoned industrial, and it's a bunch of truck depots and empty trailers and huge, you know, circular rolls with wires on them and so forth. That's industrial zoning. So, if we don't endorse some other alternative like this, that's what we could face, and that clearly, at least in my view, is much less desirable than this plan, which obviously, there's issues with it too. But between the two, that's what I'm struggling with. So, Bob, I completely agree with where you're at on this.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes it's be careful what you, you know, what you wish for. And I, you know, I get it. It's a tough, it's a tough balance here.
I have one other concern or comment. To the developer, thank you for going back and redoing your tree survey. Certainly came back way, way different this time than what you presented in October. But I guess I would encourage my fellow commissioners and those of you in the audience to actually go walk that piece of land. It's actually a really good time to walk it right now, because the, all the trees and brush are off, and actually look at the trees that are on that piece of land. And if you, for us that have the plan here, if you actually go to the page, it's T 1.1. It shows, you know, Bob, I don't know if you can bring that up on the screen.
I'll try.
Go down.
It's pretty far back in the meeting deck. Basically, it shows all of the heritage trees that are 18 inches or bigger at about four feet high.
Go up four, I think.
And then, yeah, keep going.
Yeah, try zooming out there. You want the whole site or just the...
Oh, yeah, the whole site. Those are individual sections.
Okay, go back one more.
One more.
Keep going another couple pages.
One more. One more.
There you go.
See 2.0?
It should say, one I'm looking at is T 1.1, so it might be a little farther. Keep going.
Go up or down?
Toward the back. Okay, that's the one right there.
T 1.1, right here.
Okay, that's good. That one's good. So, what you see on the screen is the entire piece of land, and the trees that are marked here are only the good trees. These are not the ones that are diseased or undesirable species. And the ones that are green are the heritage trees that are 18 inches or bigger in diameter at four feet high. That's my understanding. Somebody correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, so, this is the, just the desirable species and undesirable species. The one before this is the plan page you're referencing. Can you go back one, Bob?
One more?
Yeah. There you go. That's the one you want, the green one.
So, this one is showing all the trees on the survey, but this one on the, all the red ones are the undesirable trees. So, the ones I'm focused on are just the heritage trees that are the really good ones. So, go ahead, one more page, back to where we were. Okay. So, everything you see on this screen, the green trees are the heritage trees with an 18-inch or broader diameter. The blue are heritage trees between about eight inches to 17 inches wide. So, these are significant trees. But if you look in that center area there, you'll see there's a whole cluster of green trees. I counted them. There's about a little over 70 of those there. And then when you go to the next page, which is the, actually, it's a T 1.2. Yeah. Yes, that's it. You can see that almost all of those trees in that center area are lost in this development. In fact, there's only 17 of them that are left. So, of the 70 heritage trees in that center area, all those green trees, the really big ones, there's only 17 that make it onto this sheet, which is a bit disappointing to me for the developers. I thought that when you got the results of the survey, you were going to go back and actually look at moving some of the elements around to try to preserve this tree canopy in the center. So, from my point of view, and I know we had at least a couple of people talk about the tree canopy, but that was not a major concern that was mentioned here. But if the project does go forward, I would really like to see the developer take a look at trying to reposition some of these buildings to preserve more of that green area there in the middle. That would be an asset not only to you as the developer and the people that live there, but to all of the people in the east side of the township. So, that would be my comment.
And one quick correction. The blue ones on the plan are not heritage trees. They're just trees of desirable species and of good health.
Okay.
The green ones are the heritage trees.
Green are heritage.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, you're right. They're still desirable trees, though.
Just a couple loose ends. So, the reason for this other access point is because that's a requirement of the fire department.
Yes, and they're both public roads, so it's fully within anyone's right to connect them, essentially.
I just wanted to make sure people understand how we ended up at this point. And then someone else asked me, what is in that fire department's report? They have to correct everything, because it's a public safety thing. The fire department won't approve it. But there are basically things like, there'll be no parking signs on the one side of the street. There is going to, the roads have to be 26, I think, what was it, 26 feet? It's the width of the road. It's just to make sure that the fire trucks have access to everything. So, there's nothing wrong particularly with density or anything else. They're looking more at access points, that they have the right turning radiuses for their trucks, those kinds of issues. And someone else complained about the prices of homes. They should be cheaper. That's not our job. That's an overreach to try to dictate to developers, you know, that you can only build houses for X amount of dollars. That's market-driven. That's something the commission or the township does not get involved in. So, those are a couple of other loose ends.
I have a question for you as well. Could you repeat that part that you said that the developer has a right to connect to adjacent roads?
So, yes, aside from the fact that it's a Wayne County road, the fact that both roads on either end are public, and that the road through the middle is intended to be public, the township is often avoids, you know, forcing people with that public right to close off their roads. It's really up to the county, and the county likes increased access, so.
So, and maybe this is a hypothetical. I'm sorry, were you finished?
Oh, go ahead.
Maybe this is a hypothetical that you can't answer, is that if, to go back, and I, by no means do I mean this to be like a doomsday comment or anything like that. But if this were turned down and it became an industrial site, that industrial site would still have to have an ingress and an egress. The fire department would require it. Would they have the right to connect to that road on the north if it was a private drive?
I believe so, yes.
It's a reservation. They, they...
Yeah, so trucks aren't, like, allowed on the road, but in terms of establishing, like, an emergency connection?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So, how desirable is that piece of land?
We're not, it's, let's, we'll take comments in a minute, but let's try to keep some order.
So, even, so if it were an industrial site, employees could use the access to the north to get, you know, to get home, to get to the freeway, any place else. So, this problem wouldn't, isn't unique to this PUD option. This is going to be a problem or concern with anything that goes into this development, I would say. Yes, anything that would require enough fire capacity to have that connection, essentially. So, given the size of the site, there would be most industrial facilities interested in locating there.
So, your point, I want to make sure I understand it. So, your point is if there was an industrial building that went in there and they had, I don't know, hundreds of workers, they could still go to the north, because they're not, typically aren't driving trucks.
Right.
Okay. So, if you folks, the developers can come up and you have any reaction to this, any additional thoughts? You've definitely have heard the residents, particularly for this traffic to the north.
So, I'll certainly address items that pertain to the residential for-sale component. You know, we do have here with our engineer, Nick with Pomeroy Living, and then our traffic engineer, who completed the study, so we can ask and answer any questions from there.
Perfect. I'm sure there'll be a number of questions for the traffic person.
Absolutely. I don't want to get too in the weeds on the traffic study, but I would just like to remind everybody, a lot of the traffic items that were discussed are on Ann Arbor Road and are attributable, attributed to items that are already existing. Well, it's the hospital, the new Amazon plant. These traffic conditions exist in many ways. I think we'll be able to speak to it much more articulately than I'll be able to, regardless of this... of this development. And I think as we have a master plan or a future plan that, you know, clearly delineates what is the direction that the, the township's going to go into, those were all part of the future plans for the township. So these are all incremental steps towards a larger plan. So again, I just wanted to reiterate, you know, in, the reality of it is the challenges of traffic in this area are here regardless of whether this development gets off the ground or not. And I know there's a lot of frustrations around the perimeter of this project, but they're there. Certainly will contribute. I'm, I'm not trying to ignore that, but it certainly will be, you know, use any term you want, drop a, you know, drop in a bucket, pound on an elephant, what have you, but those traffic issues, they're there. But again, I think it's exasperated by all of the uses around here, not just what we're planning to have. I would just like to reiterate density. Again, when you look at the master plan and future uses, um, you know, I did the math on it. This site, in theory, if, if I'm hearing correctly, when the master plan is adopted, it could have up to 1,190 units on it. We're certainly not proposing that, but we're certainly proposing a project that's a third of that, and you, forget the density for a moment, it's also 51% open space. If, you know, fast forward to when the master plan gets adopted, if a developer like us or someone else comes in with 1,190 units, a lot of the trees that you like today, a lot of the open space you like today, will, will be gone. And quite frankly, you know, we have worked really hard to preserve as many trees as we can, because I completely agree with the commissioners, that trees have value to us. But there is unfortunately an impediment to development, and, and that's why there's a tree ordinance. So we're not just obliterating the trees and saying, too bad, so sad, we're replanting 1,000 trees if my numbers are correct. So it's not that they're gone forever, they're just being repurposed. Um, but we did go through a pretty exhaustive effort to try to keep the project viable and at the same time save and retain as many trees as possible. Um, and we did increase that count significantly. Um, you know, I, I do agree with industrial users. It, it's, you know, I, I lived in Washington DC next to an industrial user. Um, I can tell you, light industrial is the hottest segment of the real estate market today. It's, it's not residential, it's not office, it's not retail, it's light industrial, and it's been like that for 10 years. They are highly sought after, um, and my guess is if Pomeroy Living, who owns the property, didn't own the property and someone else did, it probably would be light industrial. Luckily, Pomeroy, Pomeroy Living is an apartment developer, that's their business. Um, so I, I do agree with some of the comments here. Uh, a light industrial user could come in here, they would need very little approvals as long as they met setback in site plan requirements. Um, and those are 24 hour operations, and it's not just Amazon, it's FedEx, it's UPS, it's cold storage, it's trucking, it's all kinds of uses. Um, one of the other items I did want to make sure we're on the same page on, it does sound like as you go, I believe it's general drive, only a portion of it is industrial, whi- which I understand that, uh, but keep in mind, we're not an industrial user nor are our consumers. Toll Brothers will not allow construction traffic to go to the north. We can control that, that's simple, we can barricade it, we do it all the time. Um, and the end product, nobody will be using that in an industrial vehicle. It'll be cars, just like we talked about, just where light industrial use, anyone who drives a normal vehicle will be able to exit to the north and go about their way. Um, our customers will do the same thing.
Do you, uh, not interrupt you, but do you water down dust and, you know, someone said what?
Of course we do. You know, we mitigate, we understand construction is disruptive. Um, I, I do get that, you know, if you search the internet for any business, you're going to find things that are, are less than ideal. Uh, we build 10,000 homes a year and we operate 16,000 apartments and we build high-rise condominiums. We, we acknowledge we're not perfect. My opinion of Toll Brothers, who, who I, is very dear and dear to me, is we know we're not perfect. The reality of it is, we don't promise perfection, we promise that, not if, but when we make a mistake, we'll stand behind and do the best to correct it. Um, so I would say the fact that we have almost 400 active communities, we're building high rises and apartments all around the country, um, the, the small portion of discretion you can find in a given period of time, I think speaks volumes. There will always be discretion, there will always be issues. Everyone in this room has had a speeding ticket, doesn't make us bad drivers, doesn't make us malicious drivers, but we, we make mistakes and we stand behind it, we correct our actions. Um, one of the other things, let's see. Talk about that. Um, you know, as we talk through the PUD, you know, guidelines, eight criteria, based on everything we talked about today and the debate we've had from, you know, you folks, and thank you so much for coming out, this is democracy at its best, I think it's actually really cool. My wife thinks I'm such a geek, I go home all excited about these meetings and how cool it is to watch. But I, I do think the challenge with the criteria is, one of them is an adverse effect on the neighbors based on traffic. I think we've proven that no matter what use short of remaining in its current state, there will be an adverse effect. Um, and I think anyone can stand up here and say, whether it's one house or 1,000 houses, there'll be an adverse effect on the traffic. So I, I just want to remind everyone of that, that, you know, adverse, I think it's a little bit of a flaw in the writing, that it, adverse is hard to define. Um, you know, it's very nebulous, but you know, either way, there will be an adverse effect on traffic. Let's see, uh, wildlife, that was brought up. Um, I'm an animal lover. I, I watched a study on, or a documentary on Betty White last night, I learned something new about her, how she's given most of her money to animals. Um, I'll, I'll admit it, I teared up a little bit, she was sitting next to a giant grizzly bear feeding her marshmallows. We do love animals, we have someone in our office specifically tasked with trying to find a way to, you know, humanely trap and release animals on the site. Um, we do that on most of our projects, we don't want to disturb nature, that, that's certainly not our intent. Um, so we've committed, I think we've committed to that from day one when it was first brought up, but we have not relinquished from that commitment. We will absolutely spend reasonable amount of money to ensure we remove as much of the animal, animals as possible. Um, let's see, um, I know we're not going to talk about dollars and cents and values, but, um, I will tell you, based on our study, there is absolutely an underserved market at the homes and the price points in which we're planning to offer in this community. Um, in the last 12 months, i- if my math is correct, um, there's been 93 homes that have sold between 300 and 450,000, or $550,000. Today, so again, 93 have sold, there's only two on the market that are not new construction homes. The balance would be Pulte Site, someone had recommended it. It, it's an underserved price point in this market. Um, you can't buy a home at this price in Plymouth, certainly not a single family home, it, that home would be probably close to a million dollars. Um, so I just want to remind everybody that, that there is not a, there is a need for that housing today, because if anyone wanted, I, I live in downtown Detroit and I rent. If I wanted to buy a home in Plymouth today, there's only two options for me to buy today. Um, there's less than one month of inventory, um, whi- which, you know, normally a balanced market's about six to seven months. So, um, I just, again, we're not here to talk about price, but it is an underserved component of this, of this area. Um, and those were most of the items I had, and certainly we're open to any questions you may have. Do you guys have anything you wanted to?
Well, I, I would like to hear from the traffic individual, if you could just comment on some of these comments that you had.
I just have one comment though. Excuse me, I just have one comment though. Plymouth Township is different than the city of Plymouth. So we're looking at serving the needs of Plymouth Township. I know there's a lot of developments in the city, but we are separate from them.
Good point. You have any comments?
Mike Lively from Row. Um, it's kind of, maybe we should have a little bit of Traffic Engineering 101 on how this is done. Developer comes to us with a plan, we get the plan, we look at it, we find out who owns the roads, who owns the, what city they're in, or township, and we solicit a scope of work for the study. In this case, we have the township, Wayne County, and MDOT. We got a scope from all of those people, and we did the study consistent with accepted practice that's done for these kinds of studies. Now, not all of you might, might even like to think that we do stuff like that, but that's how it goes. And so the traffic forecasts, all the analysis to figure out the levels of service, which is A through F, and F is not so good, and A is great, but you're living in Utah in the mountains if you get a level of service A or it's three o'clock in the morning. So level service D in a lot of, most places is acceptable in a, in an area like this, southeast Michigan. The analyses that were done, so the traffic forecast is consistent with something that the Institute of Transportation Engineers develops this book and they continue to update this book, keeping track of something called trip generation. So our forecasts, when you have to do one of these studies, you have to forecast the trips because there's no, there's nothing on that property now. So the idea is try and figure out, forecast the trips, but how do you get them out on the network and how do you evaluate the impacts? Those are all standard analysis things that we do. Um, so the engineers, the township, and the county, and the state, they understand that's what we're going to do. And if we don't do that, then we don't, we don't get accepted the next time we do this. And you have to be pre-qualified to do this stuff, so it's not, we didn't make any of this stuff up and we have to follow the rules, otherwise we'll have to take up something else. So, um, that being said, there's a couple of things that are obviously burning in, in for you, and that is that what are the implications of having the traffics that might want to go to the north, go to the north versus if they didn't, for example? Um, and we went to the concern of what the, what the impacts are at, let's say there was, all you could do is break the, the, a gate down if a fire truck wanted to get through there. Otherwise, you couldn't go through. The only way you could get out of this development is to go to Ann Arbor Road. There's delays there, you open it up and go to the north, the delays are still challenging, but they do improve a little. Do they improve maybe to your, like, in other words, if, if we, if we save 10 seconds of delay, is that worth it to you? I don't know. Uh, but it might be worth it to have better access, might be worth it to have better fire access and emergency vehicle access. There's a number of other things that are going on about access to the north between the township and the developer. They're working on that. It's better to have better access, no matter what you do. So, that being said, there's a, existing problems out there, we've offered a number of things to do to make those things better. They're not necess, they're not going to, I didn't say fixed, or I didn't say, I just said they'll be better and they're trying to, attempting to mitigate our traffic impacts. It is plenty bad out there, difficult out there now, right? It is, you, you all know that. So, uh, what is MDOT going to do about that? MDOT's got a lot of things to do. There's a lot of places where delays are worse than level service D, no matter where you go. So we have to do the study, figure out what to do, try and mitigate, and have the thing operate as acceptably as possible. We've recommended some changes, whether MDOT will do them, we don't know, whether or not, um, they'll say, wait a minute, we'll, we'll look at that in 10 years. I don't know. I don't know what MDOT's going to do with this. I can tell you that we've done, I think we did 200 and some studies like this, this in 2021. And there are a lot of places where you have these sort of challenges, otherwise they wouldn't be developing them. The operation of these intersections and the improvements that are associated with them, sometimes the developers can fix, sometimes the developers can help to fix, and sometimes there's a, the road agency has got a five-year plan and it's going to get fixed in five years. Usually when they design these roads, they know that this information, this development is coming, or that it could, and they've planned for that kind of thing. Does it look like they did that on this one? I don't know. This development, this site stayed vacant for a long time compared to when the industrial stuff went on on the south side of the road and when that shopping center went in. So, there's a couple, one more thing, is that this study, this study included the, the development on the, the Henry Ford Hospital site, and it also included the, um, Amazon site. So we have their traffic in our study. They're ahead of us, so we have to plan for that. But it's not as though we didn't include it, we did the study the way it needed to be done, we followed all the accepted practice rules. Is it going to be a panacea? No. Some places it won't during the peak hours. But we can, we can offer things to improve it, whether MDOT and the county are going to do them, I don't know. That's, but what this developer's going to do to, to make its site, his site work is, there's some recommendations in here for that. And not all the traffic is going to go to the north. I mean, it's not as though it's going to become a, you know, a freeway up there, but it is, it'll, it'll reduce it enough to improve the operation down on Ann Arbor Road to some extent. Let's see, what else did I see here? Ed crossings and push buttons and flashing lights and things like that to cross Ann Arbor Trail, that's not the, this developer's thing to do, uh, unless he was promoting that. That's, that's something for the township to have a plan for, and I'm sure they probably do of some sort, but it's also, you have to go to the, the Wayne County to get, get that. And whether or not you think, there's places where that belongs and there are places where it doesn't belong. You don't put a crossing where it's unsafe, but we didn't look at that at all and we were not asked to look at that. If that becomes something necessary for us to look at, we will. We can do that, if, if the township wants that. Don't think, I think that's all I wrote down, I wanted to.
There was, there was one that a couple of people had mentioned, what was the coverage area that you studied? Remember, they wanted to know if you went up to Ann Arbor Trail, so was there a boundary of the area that you were studying?
We, well, it's not a boundary, it's intersections. So the study, I can give you, for those of you that have looked at the intersection, or the report, um, Ann Arbor Road in Lily, Ann Arbor Road in Mill, Ann Arbor Road in the shopping center, Taggertie, Ann Arbor Trail, shopping center drive, post-south drive. So those are the ones, those are the intersections. And so let, let's say you, we, we were asked to look at it with and without access to the north, let's say. We could do that, um, because what you, what you have to try and do is develop a model that helps you to figure out where the new traffic is going to go to and come from. So we did that based on the counts that we took. Sometimes you have a much larger area and you have to do something different. SEMCO does a lot of this kind of stuff, okay? But in this case, these types of studies are done where you go out and collect the traffic data at the intersections, the peak hour turning movements. We have this stuff that comes in with all the movements, left, right, and threes at the intersections, along with the traffic signal timing and the lineage and all that that you have out there. But based on those movements and the percentage each one of those movements is of the total in that area, helps us to come up with a distribution model. If you look at table two in the report, it shows you how many come to and from the north and south and all that. So we could easily take the, take that information and go with access to the north and without access to the north and know how many new trips are going to go to and from.
This was, uh, just to refresh my memory, the reason there's not just an emergency entry point there is the fire department rejected it?
Um, I can't say whether or not they rejected it, I don't remember what they said, but really that just that it's within the purview of Wayne County to make decisions about access on a public road.
Okay.
In that way.
All right.
You want me to comment on that?
Yeah, sure. You, I got a comment, would like to hear from the expert.
Well, I might as well, because I'm standing here, and maybe it'll clear something up to help you decide.
Okay.
Um, there are a lot of places where they do things like that for emergency access. Uh, there are a lot of places where, uh, you create a, a boulevard access, and that's, that's sufficient for a fire department or police, uh, if you only have one. But if you have, if you have two access points, that's good, but there are a lot of places where you can, they'll put up a breakaway gate or something like that. Sometimes they have them with keys or they have cards on them, there's a lot of different things people have done over the years. Wayne County is, they own the roads, uh, so access to that, those roads up there, even though, um, they don't look like they maintain them, they, at least that's what it sounded like, uh, they're probably getting the, they're probably getting the same attention that all the other gravel roads do in Wayne County and Oakland County and McComan, every play out, place else. The volumes, they get to a point where the volumes are, are higher than they can, uh, properly maintain, so the thing falls apart every time. The roads are difficult to keep to where they don't get potholes and things in them. Uh, so Wayne County, would they, would they agree to having a fire access or a, you know, some sort of gate breakaway up there? or, you know, some sort of gate breakaway up there? Uh, uh, maybe. They probably would if you, given all, everything else, but I don't know if, um, if that's, that, that wouldn't be a big, big decision for them, I don't think, but it is their decision.
And Dennis, just, just to be clear, it's also a mitigation for the delay that's experienced along Ann Arbor Road at the intersections. That's another reason why we have the access to the north as full-time rather than just emergency.
Uh, Bob, uh, I have a question. You know, people complain about the gravel roads and, you know, flooding. Does the township do, I know at one point the township was boiling down the gravel roads and we had many more than what we have today. I mean, do they do any maintenance on the roads in that area?
Um, so, the county, the county does. Um, I think there's, I want to say there's eight stretches still of, um, of dirt roads. There's like Ridge, south of, um, Ann Arbor Road, and I, I can't remember where they're all at. Um, but if they, pardon me? Joy. Yeah, joy is, um-
The beauty roads.
Yeah, exactly. But if, if people want it paved, then the residents, what has to happen is you create what's called a special assessment district with a boundary around it. And, and the reason for that, so if you go through the neighborhoods in the township that have their roads rehabilitated, what actually happens is that the neighbors get together and 51% of the people in that neighborhood sign a petition that says they want to create a special assessment district, and then they, and then they basically have to pay for it. So, that's what she was referring to when there was a vote taken, um, as to whether they would have it paved. And if they're going to have those roads paved, um, then under, under the way the special assessment district, uh, works, those residents would get assessed, uh, a fee to cover the, cover the paving, unless the developer agreed to pay for it.
But the gravel roads are completely, uh, maintained by Wayne County. The township doesn't do much?
Correct.
Cars, I know, yes.
Yeah, that, that's usually the way it works with every township.
Yeah, I think-
Well, what happens though in Plymouth Township is because Wayne County doesn't really spend any money on neighborhood roads, you know? Theoretically, it, they're Wayne County roads. The roads in, in my neighborhood, for example, we had to pay to get them fixed because Wayne County won't pay. But if you go to other counties where there's townships, there, there are roads and theoretically they should be paying to maintain them, but they don't in Wayne County.
There's a lot of places that-
Yeah.
Wayne County's not unique, though.
Yeah, I know, I know. But it's, it's disappointing because we're a donor community to Wayne County, but we're getting off, we're getting off topic here.
It's really disappointing because they continue to collect money to fix them, yet they don't do it. So, it's, it's challenging.
I just got on my soapbox. I apologize for that.
It's okay. You're not by yourself, I can tell you. Uh, any other questions for me?
Are we going to take another round of comments or something? Well, yeah, I, usually we don't do that, but I know it's an important issue for all of you, so why don't, um, wait, I'll just ask, should they come up to the mic? Is that important for you when you do your minutes? It's helpful? Okay. So, sir, I saw your hand up first. You just-
I just had a question for this young man that's talking because he's a road expert.
But can you, can you, can you- Can you just come up to the mic because the secretary has to transcribe this?
I'm the loudest guy in the room.
Oh.
It has to be, it has to be captured on the recording.
Yeah.
And it, we kind of prefer that we don't, you address the board and we'll address it, so we don't get into this, you know, two people having a argument.
Prefer to call it disagreement.
Disagreement. A difference of opinion.
That's right.
My question was on the road that I saw in your plethora of documents, talked about Ann Arbor Road, is that correct? That you were talking about the intersections on Ann Arbor Road? That's what they looked at? Were those rated E and F that I saw?
Somewhere, yeah.
And that was based on the fact that it was 100% going out onto Ann Arbor Road?
No.
Okay. Because that's a four-lane road and you didn't talk about whether there was anything on Ann Arbor Trail. Was that included at all, or they didn't really assess those as part of this?
Oh, you mean the, the gravel roads?
Well, going out onto Ann Arbor Trail.
Yeah, they didn't, they didn't, they did not.
They just did Ann Arbor?
They didn't, they didn't think that that was-
Okay.
Did you want intersection, intersection on Ann Arbor Trail?
Yeah.
But not, I mean, we could, I mean, it's not too difficult, but-
Because I didn't know if it was assessed on 100% going north when they graded it as an E and F.
No, no, it wouldn't do that. See, the idea is the-
But my, my only question was, they're four-lane road and Ann Arbor Trail was two-lane road, and that wasn't mentioned on traffic studies. I was just wondering. And you guys said Hagerty and Ann Arbor Trail. That was my only question was if they did anything on Ann Arbor Trail.
Those are ENFs because of this development, they're ENFs as they stand today.
Correct. So, that's only going to get worse.
But largely.
Okay. I, I was just asking in case they did anything on Ann Arbor Trail that was included, but you just say the one intersection.
Right.
That, that was my only question.
There, another, yes, ma'am, you?
I'm sorry, could I ask just one quick question? Do you know what the traffic volume on Ann Arbor Road is in that, in, per day, in that, uh, that segment by any chance? Any ballpark?
I thought you said 14,000, was that-
14,000?
No, it's, it's, it's 22,000.
Twenty plus. Twenty plus.
22,352 is the latest from M.D.O.
It's okay, it's okay. I just, if you knew, you know.
Okay, ma'am.
Um, I would like Toll Brothers to, um, respond to my question regarding the berm not being all the way to the far east and, and the north side, and if the berms are in lieu of the actual fence that you were going to put up.
I can address it. So, we met onsite, you know, one of our land development teams did. We didn't extend the berm all the way to the east because there are existing stands of trees. So, to extend the berm to the east, we'd have to remove trees. And our intention was to maintain as many trees as possible. If it's preferable, then we can certainly remove trees and add a berm, but we felt based on comments from last meeting, tree preservation was more important than the berm. Um, the berm is in lieu of the fence, because it's an eight-foot fence. We're doing a four-foot berm with empty trees are probably 12 feet tall, evergreen trees are at least six to eight feet tall. So, the combination of is, is much greater in height.
What about on the east side? Will they have a fence? Because I don't see a berm at all.
Yeah, that'll be a fence.
Okay.
Because there's no existing tree, very few existing trees.
Well, you have tags on the trees in that section that you're not going to be putting a berm. Does that mean you're removing trees?
No, tags are just, they have numbers on them, and they, they correlate back to the report.
They're pink tags. Ribbons.
They would tag those if they were making sure they- Like a field barricade.
Okay, so you're not removing any of those trees, and there's many of them on that north side with those pink tags. You're not removing any of those trees?
I don't, I haven't seen them move with the pink tags. They're using those to verify what trees have been double-checked on the tree survey. Um, I don't know if we can pull the tree survey up, I won't tell you. But most of those trees in that corner are not on our property.
Are not what?
On the property for this project. I think a lot of them are on-
On the Wayne County easement, is that what you're saying? Okay.
So, but long story short, you know, the tree survey will tell you which trees we're removing and which ones we're not.
Okay. Well, it doesn't look like from the picture that you have that you, there's very many trees left in that corner.
Ma'am, are there, ma'am, ma'am, are you, are there numbers on those tags, on those ribbons?
I'd have to look. I don't know for sure.
Because if they were, you could look at the, uh, at the- Do you know if there are numbers on them? Okay.
You can hammer it up. Those are like a dog tag. Yeah, they, it sounds like they use them to verify, if you're out in the field, you don't want to climb up a tree, looking at a tag every time to make sure you check them.
Okay.
This is what's there.
Okay, but that's, that's not on your property. That's, those are in the county easement. You have, I think there's maybe two that are actually in that easement or in your area that you stopped the berm. Why aren't you going all the way to the far east?
Because the existing tree cover provides a greater buffer than the berm, you know? That was the intent. We don't have no problem moving the berm all the way over, as long as the question is, we, our goal was to save trees.
I would prefer to fence myself because you're, we're going to have people and children running through the backs of our property. I mean, four feet, you know, kids love to jump off.
We met with, I think we offered to you quite a few people, and we did onsite, and this, for the people we met with, this is what they wanted to see, so.
I know you met with them to look at the trees that you were giving us the additional 15 feet, and there were hardly any trees, but you guys didn't know that.
But, long story short, we met, this is based on feedback from people who went to the meeting. Unfortunately-
I've been to every meeting.
Were you at that meeting with Scott Hanson?
Where we actually, where they walked it? No, I was not at that meeting.
Unfortunately, we can only go off the feedback that was given during that meeting, and we'll be happy to extend it all the way to the east, so that's not an issue. So, if that's a concern, we're, we're not disagreeing in any way. Um, but again, we're trying to balance off what people have asked for, coupled with trying to preserve trees and planning commissioners asking for. Um, so, we have to go back and look at it. Um, but do, do you want, so I, I guess what, you want to do, you want to-
I would prefer to fence myself, but if you're saying the majority wanted a berm instead of a fence, then, you know, I guess that's what we're going to have to go with. But I, it, my concern is that everybody will be walking through the backs of yards to cut through to get to Ann Arbor Trail.
Likely, but-
It's unlikely?
Yeah, you guys, yeah.
Anyway, we hear what you're saying, we'll, we'll take into account.
I'm sorry? So, but what happens, what do we do if we do have people cutting through our yard?
Call the police.
Don't let any of your neighbors walk in.
It is trespassing.
So, we can put up a sign, no trespassing?
Anytime.
I mean, in all reality, it sounds like a lot of people are entering this property as trespassing and walk the trails and they're, they, we can't have it both ways. It, it is unfortunate. Um, you know, we all have neighbors, and you guys have neighbors, and it sounds like you're cooperating, getting along well. You have that faith that the folks that are going to live here are equal, respective natures and want to do the right thing, because they don't want you probably going in their backyard, which means they practice what you preach, and you probably don't go in yours. Does that mean somebody's not, is going to or not going to? I, I don't know, but there are ways in which to mitigate that. But if you want a fence, then I don't think a fence is an issue. We originally had a fence, no one liked the fence, now we don't have a fence.
Well, I just think that it, it, the fence makes good neighbors, you know, we've-
Well, ma'am, you might, might, if you, if it's possible, you might want to take a picture of that corner. This is really getting to more the nitty-gritty of the site plan, which we're not into that nitty-gritty portion. If this goes through, you know, uh, we're not at that point right now, but certainly it's, it's an issue that needs to be looked at perhaps again. So, wait and see what happens with this. If they get, uh, you know, recommendation from us or, you know, the board of trustees or whatever, and we get to that nitty-gritty site plan review, then I, I think we would, it's coming back here, we would welcome to look at those pictures and, and walk that site and see what would be best, and I'm sure-
And we, I hope we don't, too, within reason, we've been very knowledgeable and flexible, so we would walk from fence to berm, we don't mind doing thin berm or bigger berm. Those aren't the things that are going to hold us up, so.
But I can say, I've lived in my house on Spicer. I'm the last house on Spicer before it turns to Waverly. I've lived there since 1979. It's been zoned industrial, and nothing has moved in, and, you know, actually, to be honest with you, I would prefer industrial. I really would, to, to this massive density. So-
Well, we've heard that, and I think there's a couple more comments, so I'd like to get as many in as possible. Yes, sir, you. Yeah, you, right here in the front?
My name's Bob Miller. Um, I live next door to that lady, and I'm on the, right on the edge of the northeastern corner of the development. Um, just out of curiosity, has there been any projections on what that's going to do to the tax base for the township?
We do not look at that. The, the planning commission does not look at, uh, any of those economic kind of issues. We're here just to look at planning, use, you know, what a project looks like. We do not get into any of the economics of it.
Now, someone mentioned, I think you said that you've met with the people on the street? I didn't see anybody and I got no mail, but, uh, when did you do that?
I believe that was, it was bef, sometime before the October meetings. I don't know if it was August or September.
Have a record of meeting folks, too?
Well, there's a notice requirement.
Well, we had several, just to make everyone clear, we had several folk, I think you were part of me, and several folks had reached out directly to us and wanted to meet.
Oh, okay.
We probably cleared that really easily, um, when you- I'll be happy to come out and walk the property from your yard and show you where the property lines are, where the line is, where the building could be, et cetera. And he came out, but, and many people were, were home, and I know we knocked on doors and everybody on, on our street had backed up for that. So, I'm sorry if you want to deal with that, but we did put it out there, and I know Debbie was sick that day. But Scott did come out. Of course, he, he just did come out to explain what that looked like in real life.
That is something the commission always recommends to developers, to go and meet with the neighbors, because, you know, when you meet one-on-one, you, you, it's more personalized, and, and a lot can get accomplished on a one-on-one basis than, uh, you know, a formal group meeting, so.
We also met with, and similar to that, with folks on the east side as well. We were able to move some stuff around, save some trees, and some folks asked to take trees out for them when we go in there, except trees are dying. So, we've had probably, I'd say, three or four, like, I call one-on-one meetings. There were folks who had reached out to us directly and, just one-on-one meetings.
Any other issues, sir?
Uh, just two other little short comments. Um, you had, you had asked one of the respondents to, do you have any better ideas? You know, anything like that. And I, I was thinking of, was it Riverside Cemetery? It's getting pretty full. That sure make a nice little place for our dearly departed neighbors to stay neighbors. Ladies and gentlemen, I just would please ask you to examine your conscience on this one. Thank you.
We, we try to do that at every application. We, we like what we have in Plymouth Township. There's been a lot of people over many years working toward it. We're trying to, trying to preserve it and keep improving it the best we can. Yes, ma'am, you in the back with the hand up? Yep?
Um, okay, so I have one question, or a few questions. Well, my first question is, um, this, there's going to be gates on this, correct? No? So, can I just drive through it?
Of course.
Okay, and then another thing is, I know you keep talking about the master plan, and I know that's already been like decided, and it's like, you know, like a five-year thing or whatever, but like, so many like urban planning and like all of those people, the master planners that you talk to, like the big people, they always say that, like, continuing neighborhoods, so they're not all like, all over the place, cul-de-sacs, gated, you know, really closed up, help with traffic. So, if you stop encouraging these sort of developments, I'm not saying you have to stop all developments, just more, not just one through street, you know, continue the neighborhood. You can even put like duplexes in. Um, Riverside has some duplexes. There's some really cute, like, really tiny, like, apartment complexes on Ann Arbor Trail. That would probably do better. And I keep saying, traffic's going to happen. Well, yeah, if you can continue down this way. I mean, look at Canton. I don't want to live in Canton. That's why I moved to Plymouth. Also, um, would you guys be paying, would you guys offer to pave and pave our whole neighborhood, including curbs, not just the basic cleaning, cur, put curbs in and make them really nice? Like, nice paving, the development?
We haven't contemplated that yet.
Well, but would you consider that?
I, I couldn't answer.
Because that might, you know, that would swing us. We wouldn't be maybe fighting this hard, truth or no?
We, we haven't looked at that yet.
I'm just saying. Um, and another thing, Alex, I would really prefer, honestly, industrial. I looked down my street on Michael, there's an industrial place already. They're really- They're really chill. I'd rather see them than see Alex checking out his dusty construction, because also, you keep talking like, oh, really friendly, we're all buds.
Well, do you have any specific questions for them?
Yes, I do, well, this is more just a comment, because he keeps talking like, we're in like, we live in the city, you can't buy anything for under a million. My house was two hundred thousand last year, mid-last year. That's when everyone was paying crazy prices, so. I'm just saying, like, he keeps trying to say he's really, you know, in touch, but this isn't the city, this is the township. That's why we have these views where we want yards and we want more public space. So the city is different. They do new builds where your neighbor's two feet away, because they tear down a house, and the building's as big as the property. But you've got to think, that's why we view it different, we're not the city, okay? So we don't pay their taxes, we really like that feel, and we're not going to get a benefit from this either, so you've got to think of it that way. Maybe drive around a little bit, okay? Drive around those old neighborhoods, you can look and see how they are.
Just for clarification, the numbers I shared in the resale market, that was based on Plymouth Township, not including the city.
All right, thank you. Thank you, ma'am. On this side, yes, ma'am, you with the hand up, and then, and then you're next. The, and the guy behind you, those, I've been picking from this side, so I'm favoring.
Number six? Thank you for letting us ask additional questions. I had a question the first go-around about page eighteen of the packet and Gold Arbor and Southworth. Just the way it was shown on there, I'm looking for confirmation that it's not going to allow access to yet another, like a tie-in to those roads?
And one of these, one of these points?
Well, it's on page eighteen of your packet.
This is eighteen.
No, the, the comment that you're referring to is talking about Gold Arbor, which technically that private road that ties into Ann Arbor is still considered Gold Arbor. It's not suggesting there's going to be a connection to the Gold Arbor to the north or south.
Right.
Can they clarify that language, because it's been all through the different plans, it keeps referencing that, like the property will, or the project will access. I'm just showing her here the exact page from your packet.
It's, it's just, it's just talking about Gold Arbor, which is that private road that ties into Ann Arbor, it's still considered Gold Arbor, and that's why we discussed that in the letter.
Okay, but it's not part of the horseshoe that is currently.
It's, it's not going to connect all the way to the, Gold Arbor to the north.
Because again, my initial concern was that it was a racetrack to cut through.
Yeah, no, it's not going to.
And it's my concern for the people, you know, that are voicing their concern here. I, I have to say, I'm, I'm really disappointed. It just feels like the voice of these people are just telling you over and over and over its density, and the concern of, you know, saying, well, it's industrial, what if something comes in? There's not going to be nine hundred people in an industrial plant coming off of Ann Arbor Trail. We, we guarantee there'll be that many people coming in and out of this complex, it's the size of this. And it sounds like, based on your comments, that you feel you would have no control, well, we better accept this, because boy, if someone industrial came along, but don't you have voting rights on an industrial complex? And be able to have some say on what they do based on the ordinances?
The ordinance will say in each zoning district, what is a permitted use. And, and I'm not picking sides here, you know, on the density, I know that's a, it's a big issue, and I have some concerns as well. But as our planner indicated, and I don't know if you have that, Ms. Wolf, if you have that number right ahead, did you say something about a thousand units that they could put in?
No, we.
Or did you?
Thirty, it was thirty-five times thirty-four.
Do you have to approve it as a PUD?
No.
As a PUD.
So if someone came in requesting a thousand units, you can deny that PUD?
The maximum amount that they can have under a PUD is how much?
Thirty-five dwelling units per acre.
Yeah.
But you would have as, as a commission that represents us as the people and the community members, the ability to deny a developer that wanted to put in more units.
More units.
Well, the board of trustees can, they cannot.
Yeah, we don't do it, we just, we recommend.
This gentleman said they don't like to go against what you recommend.
Right.
And so that's why we're appealing to you, and, and I'm sorry we're keeping you all here late, we're all tired too, but it, it feels to me like the mood in the room is like it's decided, and like we're here telling you our concerns with density, 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 and I, I love trees, I love animals, I love that.
I disagree. I don't think that's a fair comment at all. I don't think that's fair. What you've seen tonight is, you've seen people open their minds. You've seen members of the commission discuss the pros and cons. I don't think it's fair. I don't think anybody walked into this room tonight with a predisposition. We're all listening, we've been listening for hours. I, I just don't think that was a fair comment.
I'll, I'll take that back, and I apologize for any offense, there's none meant.
No offense taken.
It's, it's more a desperation for us to hear our voices as community members. The, the density of this is so concerning, and I'm not even the people whose, you know, cars are going to go up and down their road, but it, if you lived here, I ask you again, I challenge you, I think we'd like to gamble and take our chances with industrial. It's not going to be this many cars coming up and down our roads and bottlenecking us in our subdivisions. Why can't we wait and let a developer that wants to put in condos know less density, or residential, less density? So that, that's just, I appreciate the ability to say that again, and then, you know, again, you had asked for solutions, it's just less density. There's so many things, it's not this or worse, there could be other options, and I feel like if we were just patient, and your predecessors created a legacy for our community that we're all enjoying and appreciate, and your decisions today affect, you know, our future legacy for this little corner. And so I, I just appreciate the opportunity to say that again. We're passionate about it, don't mean to be offensive at all, we just so want you to hear us, and that we just feel this is just a horrible idea for this little corner of Plymouth Township.
Well, your, your passion is admired. I mean, it's, you know, not all the time that people do come and take an interest as this group has, so we appreciate you coming.
For your open minds.
Okay. All right, and over here, yes, you, and then the person behind you, right.
Point, because I know, number seven. My question was in regards to the traffic study. Thank you guys first and foremost for bringing your expert, because I, obviously, that's a big point of contention. Have you compared how much traffic general drive is seeing now versus how much it will see once this development is complete? Like an increase in percentage? How many cars?
Like, let's say there's a hundred cars on general today.
Yeah, and how many are we expecting?
A ten percent increase, or?
Correct.
What if it goes up a hundred? And then that would be a hundred percent, that's the kind of thing you want to know. I don't have that, I can figure it out, but I don't have that.
I, I guess I would just be first curious to see that, how many more cars were expected to see in that neighborhood, a real quantifiable number.
Right.
And secondly, it sounds like the, it sounds like the, the safety gate, or like the emergency exit turning into a normal entrance-exit, was just a decision based on traffic needs. So would there be a different rating for Ann Arbor Road if that turned into an emergency exit only? Because you said Ann Arbor Road was rated E, I believe?
It would change a little bit. It would get more delay, because some people would want to go to the north.
Would it change the rating?
Uh, no.
Okay, and I believe the term.
It would add to the light.
Okay, and I believe the term that you mentioned, Alex, was a drop in the bucket, right? So if, if it's going to just be a drop in the bucket for Ann Arbor Road, but a tidal wave for general drive, I think that's something to consider. So just wanted to bring that up, thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to point out real quick, because I know that we, we had discussed that if you pull up the map, you'll see general drive we discussed was not an industrial road. However, the point of rerouting the traffic to that curvature to general drive was technically because it was an industrial road. But as you mentioned, it's not. It's partly industrial, partly residential, and so the traffic will still remain heavy on a dirt road that is technically residential. So the curvature that was made on the map was because we were relying on the fact that that was industrial, and it's not, it is residential. So that's the one thing that I just wanted to point out to everybody still.
I don't know, maybe it's a question of the end of years. Industrial is a type of vehicle that transits the road, not the body.
Correct.
So my point was, whether it's industrial or not, it's residential vehicles. Well, if it's industrial all the way up to Ann Arbor Trail, it's residential vehicles, so.
But correct me if I'm wrong, the point of curving it towards general drive was because the industrial road could hold more of that traffic, and that's not, not true, because it is a dirt road.
I think that was part of the benefit of moving it that way. It was also moving it in an area that had less houses versus general drive going up, you know, I'm trying to, up the other side.
Sure, but I just want to make sure that I point out, I understand that you guys don't plan on industrial, you know, vehicles using that road, but it's going to see a lot of heavy traffic because of the way that it's curved, and it's just the same as east side drive. They're two dirt roads that will have a heavy impact from a thousand people moving into that area, being able to freely use that, that drive if it's not an emergency exit now.
Yes, sir, you, yep. And then there was someone else back, okay, and you're next, and then you're, you're after her, okay?
Hi, everyone. My name is Damon Krueger. I'm also a member of the Environmental Leadership Commission. And just a few points, the first thing I, I noticed was the reference to the master plan density was, I think, incorrectly stated. It's actually the PUD that allows for thirty-five units per versus the master plan, which has a desired maximum of about ten units per acre, I believe. So we, we do want to keep that in mind. I know it's, it's, it's just a point, but one that needed to be made. There was a point about adding trees. I think, I think that's great to add more trees. We have to realize, though, that adding a number of trees is not the same as removing very large trees that, that produce habit, habitat for, for creatures. They, they obviously produce a lot of intrinsic value for, for residents as well. So, so the number does not really equal a, a replacement, and, and it's just not possible. One thing that I was curious about, or wanted to make a point about as well, I'm not going to beat on the traffic drum or anything, but an interesting thing to consider is that there will be an increased amount of traffic through this development as well from non-residents. They're going to use that as a shortcut to get from one place to another, whether it's for a train, to get to the stores, or whatever else. So I think that's something else that needs to be considered, especially for those residents that are in those townhomes and apartments. They're going to have to deal with that, that increased traffic from other people, so that's not going to be good for, for them, I think, from their standpoint. There's been obviously a lot of desire to, to, to keep the community feel of Plymouth Township. A lot of people have, have shown passion for that. So I, I mean, one thing that seems of utmost importance is to come up with some sort of compromise where we can get a development that's going to be beneficial to the people that move into it, to the developers, as well as to the neighbors. And that's something that I, I think is very important. I think people would really love to see the development creating neighbors and not tenants. I've heard a lot of people say that they don't want to have people living there because of various factors, but I think if you do it right, you can create a neighborhood, you can create that neighborhood feel that, that kind of continues from the north all the way through and into the south. So if we can find a way to, to harmonize those, then I think that's going to be definitely a positive. As far as a solution that, that would go along with that, the, really, the only way I see matches what everyone else says, and that's just reducing the number. I, I don't think density is the key. I think it's more to what this gentleman said before, which is that in smaller parcels, that density is not as big of a deal. But when you have something that's thirty-four acres, you're talking a, a much greater number that, that simply is going to create problems for, for a lot of different reasons. So I, I think that one of the things, this is a little bit tangential, but we talked about trees, we saw the tree stands, I think that was a great point, was looking at where those things actually reside, trying to incorporate that large tree stand into this, into this neighborhood in some way. I think that's going to make a lot of people happy, whether they live there or not, but I think it, it makes it a lot more attractive for prospective buyers and, and renters if, if they keep the apartment part of it. But of course, we're going to have to limit the, the number of residences that go in there, so I don't have the, the, the solution other than higher-end homes and, and condos, which seem to be selling no matter what, so I think that's really all I have. I'm trying to be as constructive as possible, so thanks a lot.
All right, thank you. All right.
I have two questions that I have not heard addressed so far in the last couple hours. In October, I believe we talked about brownfields and contamination from the previous industry, and where might that be on the site plan? And is that where the burn is going to, the new increased burn at the northwest corner?
No, no, it's any underground water pool is at the southwest corner. It's open space.
At the site contamination that might still exist from previous industry?
Yeah, down, down here.
I don't care where exactly it was, just by the clubhouse and not really residential, okay?
Kind of a railroad track.
Yeah, okay. To clarify things.
As far as back, there's a, I don't know, ten-page summary.
Okay, I can find it near them, okay.
Yeah, there's lots of detail. If there's any additional questions.
Yeah, thank you. Sure, thank you. My second question has to do with the railroad tracks again, and I think I saw a line item in the packet that said to increase walkability in sidewalks and pedestrians going to downtown Plymouth, they're going to add a sidewalk along Ann Arbor Road under the train tracks trestle? Well, we all know that goes very, very narrow in there, so that's a big project, and that trestle is like ninety years old, and.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a big project, so.
There was actually some discussion la, last night on, in the board of trustees about that. It's a, it's a, like a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar project along with, in conjunction with CX, CSX, but that whole, that whole thing has to get rehabilitated. If you watched last night's meeting, at, towards the end, it was discussed.
That was all my additional questions. Thank you.
Two quick questions, one for the traffic, traffic study. Were trains, the delays caused by the trains, and where cars go when the train is there for forty-five minutes, was that taken into account in your study?
No.
No. So I, I would highly suggest that the Planning Commission somehow try to take that into account when looking at the traffic.
But just a minute, I think you were going to add something more. Were you going to say something else about that?
Oh, I'm sorry, did I cut you off? I apologize.
I think you might have cut him off.
You proved your point, didn't you? But no, the answer is, I got, they've got a problem with, with figuring that out, because trains are irregular. I mean, where do you study it? You know what I mean? I mean, there's a little, and we didn't get asked to study it, so we didn't know it was a problem. If you had, no, I, I kind of like the idea about worrying about being cut through through our, so I think we'll, I don't know that we, we can do anything about it either. What are you going to do?
Can I give you a suggestion? If someone's sitting at the train tracks, watch when a train comes and count the people who.
No, no, what are you going to do with it? What are you, what are you going to do with it? I don't see the, that mean you shouldn't have access? That's my point. I guess that.
Make it a fire exit, so people can't come cut through there.
That's, that's.
So the second question is, for the purpose, I, I've seen you guys reference open space a lot in your, in your presentation, and it says fifty percent open space, and that sounds fantastic. Are parking lots open space?
No.
No.
So what, yeah, what?
If there's anyone else that wants to ask a question, just, why don't you just start lining up? I thought we would only have a few, but it seems like. Yes. There's a number of you that want to return, so, and again, I asked you to try to keep it close to three minutes.
Put it aside. Yes, Benjamin Welch? Twenty-four. Oh, yeah, 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 nineteen. So, you know, they brought up a great point about. So, you know, they brought up a great point about, uh, the safety concern about the crosswalks, and they said it wasn't their responsibility. So, i- it is the township's responsibility, the planning committee. And have you guys took that into consideration for the amount of people that are going to be going downtown? A- and using the resources?
It's actually a county road, the township does not have jurisdiction over roads, it's either the county, this, or the state, or the federal government depending on the road, but the township does not, so that is not, that's not a township function.
You're absolutely right, Bob, but the safety of the people that are in this community is your guys' responsibility, so it is something that we're not, uh, essentially opt out of, to where we don't take that into consideration, it is something that we have to, you know, focus in on. And, and the doom and gloom that, that was projected, and, and Bob, you may have not meant that, or Tim, uh, but it did sound like doom and gloom. And it wouldn't it be nice if you went to the community a- and did a survey to find out, what do we want? What do we want in our community? So, if it is going to be an industrial, uh, factory, then let's find out if that's what we want. So, I, I do agree, i- if you guys do scale this thing down, I think it could be a great thing for the community. But for the amount, uh, of homes that you guys are placing on this property, yes, you could put more. And obviously, that would be a benefit, because obviously nine hundred is already a problem. So, I, I would say, take some time a- and, and try to factor in to what can we do to really hear the voice of everybody that's in that community? I, I don't think a survey is, uh, out of the question, I don't think a survey is something unreasonable to ask for. I, I agree that, you know, somebody owns this property, and they do have the right to sell it to whoever. But at the end of the day, it's zoned that way for a specific reason.
Just, just one comment on the crosswalk, you know?
Yes.
To expand on that, and, and really to support Bob's comment about who is responsible for that?
Mm-hmm.
There's, uh, the people that live, uh, near Joy Road, you know, they, they live on the Plymouth side, but they have kids that are going to the high school. And this was in a paper probably a month or so ago, they wanted a crosswalk there, well, township, and, and a safe, uh, crosswalk. And they're not going to get it, because even though the township supported it, I don't know which, which governmental agency was it, Wayne County? Wayne County would not approve it, and you have to look at it, they, they own that road, so they're liable for anything that might happen along that road. So, while we're all concerned about it, and that's a perfect example where Plymouth Township was very concerned about the safety of those kids, got, it got shut down by Wayne County.
So, I mean, with what you're saying, uh, Dennis, i- it's, we're, we're at the beginning stages of something that could raise into a big problem, uh, with pedestrians. So, we can be at the forefront and to prevent the, the township from ending up in another situation to where we don't have a c- crosswalk to accommodate the people of this community.
Well, and I, I mean, I, I think it's a great point that I, until somebody pointed it out, it, it didn't, it had not occurred to me that people would use that as a pathway into Heinz Park, and they, they would, um, you know, they must do that today.
Okay, and, uh, just came to mind, a- and then as far as like the amount of guests that are going to be, you know, coming into this community? Like, how much of that is actually factored in, uh, as far as parking-wise? Um, or, or the traffic coming from just guests?
I think I can help start and answer, so there's a requirement for parking per unit, I believe that's probably mandated in the ordinance, so we have to adhere to that. And that takes into account not just people who live there, but visitors as well. So, our plan has to adhere to that, I think, to be looked at and approved, so. Jim, that was taken into account, correct?
Yeah, that was taken into account.
So, we at least meet or exceed that tra- that parking requirement, which is all based on historical trends of visitors and people who live in there, how many cars per household, things of that nature.
Okay, so, a- as far as minimum requirements go, I mean, uh, a lot of this is going to exceed what minimum requirements are. I mean, as time has, has gone on, the amount of people that have an automobile in one single-family residence has increased over time, and, and those, those, uh, regulations that you're referring to hasn't been changed in centuries. So, uh, going to that, that, that situation of the, the additional people, you know, being in this community, it's going to flood into the current communities, uh, as far as like places to park. I, I could.
Unfortunately, the.
I can speak to that.
Get done.
So, um, in terms of how the township looks at its parking standards, um, the township revises its ordinance most recently in two thousand eight, so it is rather modern, and every single year, the International Institute of Traffic Engineers releases a report on what is the standard parking for guests and residents of all different land use types. Um, most recently, in their fifth generation, which is the most modern report, they recommend a parking ratio of, let's see, a maximum parking ratio of one-point-five-two spaces per unit for the apartments. This is disregarding the townhomes, which would have four parking spaces because of how they're laid out and how you drive a car into them. Um, and the developer is currently proposing one-point-seven-four parking spaces per apartment unit, so they're actually already exceeding a modern measured amount of parking.
How much did you say was it per unit?
One-point-seven-four parking spaces per unit for their type of development.
Okay, and then, uh, as far as what the standard is?
One-point-five-two.
One-point-five-two.
So, they can actually, in, to still be in compliance with the, like, international standard for this particular type of development, could reduce the parking even further and add an additional ten thousand square feet of open space, in theory.
It's, it's right here, um, yeah.
I was going to touch on, is the trend analysis we're seeing is cars per household is actually decreasing. Um, you know, I'm a perfect example, but my wife hasn't owned a car in fifteen years. She likes public transit, she uses Uber, she needs to go places, a lot more options. And we're seeing more and more children who are opting not to get their licenses, or begin their licenses at a later date, which means they're not adding additional cars to the household, so our trend analysis is actually seeing cars per household reducing, not growing.
Interesting, I'd like to see that in the analysis, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so, just in comment to that, you, you said that you live in an urban, or, you know, in the city, where public transport is, is much better, when, no one's giving up their car, go take the buses around here, I don't even know where there's a bus stop, there's.
She doesn't use public transit, she uses Ubers, and, like, I don't even argue over it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, anyways, um, so I, so just wanted to nail down, so what was the grade for Ann Arbor Road? And was it with, was it just Amazon and the hospital you were including, or was it including? So, was the grade including the development? I know you've said it a couple times, I just want to hear again.
It's not just one grade, though. Um, it's by movement, but I, well, let's back up a second, there's, um, depending upon what intersection you're looking at.
Hagerty and Ann Arbor Road.
Ann Arbor Road, future conditions.
I'm just saying there's a lot of words and not a lot of answers.
Pardon?
A lot of words, not a lot of answers, I'm just saying, narrow it down, it's, somewhere it comes down to A, B, C, D, E, F.
Correct.
Okay, so, what's the grade?
Okay, under future conditions, that includes an adjustment for COVID, and includes an adjustment for background traffic growth beyond Amazon and the Henry Ford site, and it forecasts the trips for our development during the two worst times of the day, morning rush hour and afternoon rush hour, okay? That's when you study these.
Yep.
Okay, Hagerty and Ann Arbor in the future will be level service E, that intersection. In the morning, and level service E in the afternoon.
Okay, um, and then what was the score for, um, Ann Arbor Road, I mean, Ann Arbor Trail currently at like general, Ann Arbor in general?
Well, I'm going to have Ann Arbor Trail and Hagerty.
Okay, what was the score there then?
Wait, say that again?
Ann Arbor Trail and Hagerty.
Ann Arbor Trail and Hagerty, oh, okay. Well, you just had that, this, that's what I gave you, Ann Arbor Trail and.
No, Ann Arbor Road and.
Ann Arbor Road and Hagerty, I'm sorry, you went Ann Arbor Road.
Yeah.
So, the one you just said was Ann Arbor Trail and Hagerty?
No.
The one you just said was Ann Arbor Road and Hagerty?
Great.
Okay, great, just checking.
Me neither, I mean, Ford's though, I mean.
It's very difficult for me to read it, I apologize, and I did study this.
Well, I don't blame you for that.
I don't blame you either.
You went, existing conditions for Ann Arbor Trail and Hagerty?
Mm-hmm.
Existing conditions for Ann Arbor.
But, wh- wh- why is, why is this information important?
Um, what, the, what, what the change will be? If it's a B now, is it going to be an E once we think it's going in?
And I'm not trying to hijack your say, but I think, does the letter rating of the road at peak times change with and without our project? Is it an E at the peak times regardless with our project, or do we impact it and change the letter rate?
Right.
If it's positive or negative, but does it, does it impact, to go from an E to an F, or an E to a D, based on our, this project getting approved?
And I think, I think there's a lot of nuance to that, too, I think what, uh, what he's getting at is it's a hundred-and-forty-five-page report. Uh, him and I have reviewed it, it's, you know, the letters are, are one thing, but it's really the seconds of delay that are at each of these intersections, and that's what we're trying to mitigate with this connectivity to the north.
I ask you a different way, and I'm, I'm not trying, because I want to understand, too, because I'm having a hard time. I, I want to be able to defend what we're doing, but I need, I'm a numbers person like you, so I, I want to know the numbers. Um, like, what? Would, if I'm driving up and down Ann Arbor Road at a peak time in the morning or the afternoon, am I going to feel the impacts of this project? And if so, how would I feel? Is it time, is it letter rating, like? And then if you said, without the community, what would be the impact, I guess, is that fair to be saying?
And what about, I mean, like, does any of this predict, like, accidents? I mean, it's not just that there's cars on the road, but it's, you know, an increased risk of accidents if people are speeding through there, you know, to cut through Ann Arbor Road to Ann Arbor Trail, um, you know, it, it's, I guess it's, I'm not just worried about, like, the seconds, you know, plan accordingly, you know, uh, when you get up in the morning. But also the safety.
Hmm, yeah, no, that's exactly what we looked at, and why, but part of the reason why we asked for the mitigation for the, uh, connection to the north is we were worried about the amount of delay that happens at Ann Arbor and that shopping center signal, as well as the others, and, uh, drivers making erratic decisions of going around and going around the shopping center. So, that's part of the reasons why we're requiring that connection to the north to help mitigate that. It's a mitigation measure more than it is a capacity or, you know, reduction.
Not to a- add another layer of, of a little confusion, or whatever you want to call it. Is there, when you do this traffic study, you know, I keep hearing about the Amazon thing, do you count those big semi trucks differently than you do passenger vehicles? Because it takes forever for those semis to, to turn.
Computer modeling accommodates that.
What does?
Sometimes the, the computer, we'll count them as a vehicle, and they'll, they'll be separated out as a, as a truck, but when you put the data into the computer models to figure this out, it actually adds two cars for each truck.
But it, it's a model, it's not an exact science, it's just a model, right? And I mean, I'm not challenging you, but I'm saying it's, it's.
It's more math than science, though.
I know there is, but you can't predict that on September thirteenth at three o'clock in the afternoon, a white car is going to run into a red car.
No, you can't do that, and it doesn't do that.
Right.
It's never intended.
It's not intended.
I know, that's my point.
Okay, so, let's get, it's kind of the harder, the first question. Ann Arbor Road and Hagerty, we, you went existing conditions. No, no, she first said Ann Arbor Road and Hagerty, she wants to compare existing versus future, right? That's what you want. Okay, existing conditions, D and D, AM peak hour and PM peak hour.
Okay.
That's the overall intersection. Individual movements are different. There's a couple of movements that are F, that causes it to be operate not too well, because some of the other movements are, are Cs. Like a left turn.
Yeah, yeah, sure, sure.
So, these are just the overall intersection now.
Okay.
So, so, Ann Arbor Road and Hagerty Road today are level source D, overall. Ann Arbor Road and, oh no, Ann Arbor Trail and Hagerty are B and C today, AM and PM. Remember, this, these studies are for the worst times of the day during the week.
I get it, we're close to A, we don't, we're not even out of, in Utah.
Right, right. So, in the future, which, under existing conditions, didn't include Amazon, it didn't include, uh, an adjustment for COVID, it didn't include background traffic growth, didn't include all that stuff, or the, or the hos- so, the future also includes all that stuff plus our site.
Okay, that's great.
Ann Arbor Road and Hagerty, E and E.
Okay.
The difference is about ten, I think it's ten seconds of delay. Because, um.
Ann Arbor Trail and Hagerty?
Oh, okay, I, okay.
Just so you know, it's forty-seven-point-four and forty-nine-point-six under existing condition, okay? Um, and then, uh, Ann Arbor Trail and Hagerty is B and C, or eighteen-point-four and twenty-one-point-nine. Okay, that's time, correct? Delay, per vehicle, stop delay per vehicle. In the future, with all the other traffic on it, plus ours,
Sure.
it's E and E at Ann Arbor Road and Hagerty, sixty-seven-point-nine and sixty-three-point-eight. And then, Ann Arbor Trail and Hagerty is B and C, nineteen-point-one and twenty-three-point-one. So, it's not a whole lot different there, because not a lot of traffic is going up.
So, that was again Ann Arbor?
Trail.
Trail and Hagerty, okay. And that was before and after the project, okay?
Not just our project, Amazon.
Yeah, yeah, Amazon and everything else, okay.
Is our project car better?
All right, thank you.
Um, I did, did want to thank you for clearing up some of the numbers, however, I think if I understood correctly, there's even some confusion between Ann Arbor Trail and Ann Arbor Road when we're having these discussions, and I know you need to look it up. But we are from here in this theater every day. So, some of the things that are factual, we talk about this becoming a cut-through. I know some things we cannot specifically quantify. Cut-through, signage is going to go up, probably, it says, please don't cut through here, speed limit signs are probably going to go up, please don't cut through here. Maybe they're not, people don't follow those, that's going to be a huge problem. Google is going to tell you, just like it tells you go to Echols, to get to the freeway, it's going to tell you go through there, if it's quicker. Is that really fair to the residents that live in that area? Your, your residents and the residents in that subdivision? Not really, um, in my opinion. Um, as far as suggestions, and maybe I'm misunderstanding this, but if you go to page thirteen out of your fifty-four here, under, um, project apartment rendering sample, and go to stable development, we talked about suggestions, and obviously, density is an issue, but it's not just a number. It's about this huge quantity of just people. And although it hasn't been mentioned in this meeting, it's been mentioned before that it wasn't financially feasible to downsize your project, right?
Well, all right, what are we talking about?
Well, those were your words, not, not my words, but that's what was said before, that it was not financially feasible to downsize this. So, in, under stable development, unless I'm misreading, and please correct me if I, I am mistaken, says that, um, the site is easily serviced by existing utilities from Ann Arbor Trail and already has some existing underground infrastructure, blah, 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 blah. Bottom line, the lower utility cost will lower the overall project cost, and could further help moderate the project's value impacts on surrounding neighborhoods. So, we're going to save some money. So we're gonna save some money there.
These aren't our words, right here?
The point is, if you were able to save some monies, and your words were actually that it was not financially feasible to downsize this project.
All right, so ma'am, you know, I think we're getting a, a, away from what's before us is, does this meet the PUD development? We're getting into the financials, that financial economic considerations is not part of our charge. We have no, nothing to do with that.
And I understand that. And what I'm asking you to hear is that we've been told things in the Zoom meetings and in these meetings, just as an example of just say, we care so much about the wildlife. In the Zoom meeting, if you go back and listen to the Zoom, I'm not gonna quote specifically, but when it was brought up, very close to this verbiage was used, that's not our concern.
So are you telling, so are you telling us they should not be trusted? Is that your point?
It was, I, I'm sorry.
Is, is your point that they should, we shouldn't trust what they're telling us?
Concerning as a resident to put your trust in someone that says, I'm a good neighbor and says, we care, we've cared since the, since the beginning is what I heard today. But if I go back, it really struck me when those words were said, that's not our concern. We're not taking that into consideration. So when you hear these two very diverse things, it is difficult to put your trust and faith in this group. Just like you can look at the tree studies, but then when you really look at the tree studies, like Tim mentioned, yeah, we're saving, but what are we really saving?
So, so you're suggesting, are you, I want to understand this. So are you suggesting that perhaps we should reject it because they can't be trusted?
I'm saying perhaps we should just dive a little bit deeper like Tim did and look at just not a number? But what really is happening here? People are crying out and saying, our community, our community, our community. And it's because we've heard good neighbor, then something different. Good neighbor, love the animals, not worried about the animals.
Well, we're limited to what the ordinance says.
And I understand that.
So trust is not included in that. So I think this discussion is, is going way off.
I understand. Thank you for listening, but it is concerning.
Okay, I, I appreciate that.
This is just a general comment about the ordinance. And I know we talk a lot about the trees, but it's my understanding there's a tree ordinance within the township. And, and that tree ordinance was up for public discussion, just like we are here today. And that was approved, and just for the record, we're absolutely adhering to the tree ordinance. Um, we're mitigating for it, but we're not doing anything that's not allowed. Um, just like the future master plan agreement, like that, that's something that's in place. That was up for public debate. I'm assuming it was a public hearing. Like it's approved, it will be as well. Um, this is a very public process, so, um, I, I just want to make sure people know that, because trees keep coming up quite often. Um, and I would like to know with the future master plan, what is the status of that master plan? And when that passes, how will that affect this property?
The master plan is still open for comment, is it not?
Yes.
Yeah, I, when, when does the comment period end? Do you know?
Um, I'm not sure when the comment period ends, but it has not been taken down yet.
It, it should not impact, uh, because it's still, you know, they're still taking public comment that it has to come back before us, that it has to come back to the board of trustees. So there's still a, a process. I don't think it's gonna go.
Petition wasn't from the group today, but it came in front of this body after the master plan was approved and in the current form of the master plan. How would this property be? Because I thought I heard up to ten units break. Is that an accurate statement?
So that is if the property were rezoned under the new master plan in accordance with the density that is suggested as the new land use for that property.
Those are future use plans.
Yeah, in the future land use map, there is a partially commercial, partially residential designation as it stands for this property. And if you were to match that to the closest zoning district that we currently have, it would be about ten units per acre.
And where I was going with that is if, assuming project never existed today in terms of how we're proposing it, if at some point it was brought forward and conformed to what it sounds like this body as well as the trustees are envisioning, this has potentially be a residential project up to ten units per acre. The difference between that project and this is three hundred and seventy-three units we're proposing today versus somewhere between three hundred and forty and three hundred and fifty units. So again, all I'm saying is if we go downrange, our alone takes to approve the master plan, it, it sounds like. Plus a commercial component. So it would be just as dense as it is today. You'd have the same exact problem, I think, if I'm interpreting all of this correctly. Now, again, our goal is not to wait for the master plan, but inevitably, you know, as the owner of the property, that could conceit would be happened. Clearly, I think the, the commission and the trustees have made it clear they want to see this a mixed use project, the residential and commercial. And, and I can't imagine why they would stray from that. Again, I don't want to speak for anybody, but now we're talking about a three hundred and fifty unit project versus three hundred and seventy-three, but one also, the three hundred and fifty unit project also has commercial. And it's probably still gonna have the same connection of road networks. I, I just want to make sure we're all looking at this camera. I think we're all very close to it right now. And we take a step back, it's not just the industrial uses that it could be zoned for. It sounds like the door could open for the same exact project that's ninety percent of what you see here, plus a commercial component, with still a road connection to the north. So I, 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 I just feel like we're going in circles that the reality of it is, it, it sounds like someday, whether it's Toll Brothers or not, this will be a residential plus commercial development. And I just, I just want to make sure everyone understood that this probably isn't going away, I guess.
That, that is if someone proposes a rezoning and if that rezoning is approved.
Correct.
So.
Go ahead.
Okay, well, this is kind of my question and, and you kind of, I guess, you, you kind of got into what I was going to ask. Um, if this is approved as a PUD, this is what tonight's meeting is about. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Want to give it a PUD status? If that's approved by the planning commission, then it goes to the boards of trustees and the board of trustees will either agree or disagree.
Um, Mary Ann, Mary Ann, the, uh, planning commission makes a recommendation, uh, to approve or a recommendation to deny or a recommendation to table it. And then the board of trustees, it's up to the board of trustees has the discretion to either accept that recommendation or go off in a different direction. Yeah, it just, and just for clarification, there have been some developments that we have recommended a certain approach to the board of trustees. And there's been a disagreement or a different thinking, and they bring it back to us. And say, why don't you look at this again? Because here's our thinking on it, and then we have changed it. Um, not all the time, but it's, it's very rare because we, you know, both, uh, bodies, you know, like to be in agreement that we're all on the same page, share the same philosophies.
The, 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 the other part of this question is, if it gets to the point that the board of trustees gives it a PUD status, the development details comes back to the planning commission?
That's right.
And then because it's a PUD, the planning commission could potentially put restrictions on just, on the density?
So, um, it wouldn't be like for all properties in the perpetuity of the future, it would be like, yes, this property would be specially bound by a PUD agreement for it. And that, you know, the planning can, commission can add extra things to PUDs. PUDs are like custom negotiations essentially.
So there is a potential that it could be, be less dense than what it's presented now.
Yeah, but.
But.
Yeah, but that's what might come, yeah.
Okay, I'm just.
It's pretty close to what it is right now. I mean, we can get into some of the nitty gritty stuff. Maybe there's a unit here or there that, that might change. But for what you see is pretty close. Like we talked about the berm, you know, is there a berm? Shouldn't be a berm, trees, no trees. Those are the kinds of things.
Whether, you know, which is the seemingly best for the community.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
I think, I think I should straighten a couple of things out just to make sure everybody, unfortunately. Oh, that lady's still there. She's still here. Good. Um, not to confuse things anymore, but maybe erase whatever you wrote down about yours. Just go, just listen for a second. Okay. This development, we, it's, you study the traffic during the worst times of the day. So in this case, these, it's gonna be work trips for this type of use, right? Okay, so in the morning peak hour, the development will have a hundred and thirty-nine trips. Thirty-five in and a hundred and four out. So in, in basically, a lot of people going to work. The afternoon, it'll have a hundred and seventy-five total trips during that peak hour. A hundred and eight in, so everybody's coming home from work, and sixty-seven out. What we want to know, or what, what you were trying to get at, is what is the impact of this development on the already poorly operating intersections on top and incorporating the growth, COVID, and the two other developments? So there's a background traffic analysis that goes existing. You go out and count the cars, you plug in all the information to the network, you figure out levels of service, that's existing. Then you add growth for the time period from when we collected the data up to when the final apartment is rented. So that's, and there's a annual growth number that you can calculate and get from SimCOG. So the existing traffic volumes are, at a certain percentage are grown. Then you, on top of that, you add, in this case, Amazon and the, uh, Henry Ford site. So that was called background. And that gets you up to the, the, the day of when they rent the final apartment, okay? And you want to know, what is our impact on that? That's not, it's not on existing, it's on background. How much more delay are we gonna add to this at that point? Because that, that's a fair assessment of the impact of this development, not of all the other stuff going on or anything else. So, that's what I'm saying, we're gonna give you some different numbers. Okay, table six in the report. Ann Arbor Road in Hagerty, level of surface analysis for background condition. In the morning peak hour, it's E, sixty-seven seconds of delay. Afternoon peak hour is E, sixty-two point five. Ann Arbor Trail in Hagerty is B, eighteen point nine, and C in the PM, twenty-two point eight. Okay, so that's what happens without our site. Table eight. Ann Arbor Road in Hagerty, E, sixty-seven point nine, and E, sixty-three point eight during the PM. And Ann Arbor Trail in Hagerty, B nineteen point one and C twenty-three point one. So if you want to, that's a fair comparison. You look at those two and you say, grow, background traffic and there's an incremental, but the development doesn't generate an awful lot of trips during the peak hours in comparison to all the trips that are out on the network already.
What's the delta?
Uh, I didn't figure that out, but delta's not very much.
And that, to make sure I understand that. Not there.
No. Does. We have that. So the answer to your question is the north access changes things a little bit, but it's not the panacea because there are problems out there today. And new traffic from this development wants to go where big traffic is during the peak hours. It's a work, work trips. I know it's, I didn't.
Well, I think we, can we do the delta on those numbers? I think we had.
Well, we, you could add them up. I didn't figure them out, but.
A few seconds.
It's, it's just a couple of seconds of delay. Overall, at, at an intersection that's processing, we might be adding twenty cars to an intersection that's processing a thousand or more in that hour. So it's not a big impact, um, but.
And that correlates back to my drop in the bucket comment, because we've studied this report.
Yeah.
This community is not the problem with traffic, you know? It, it, it's much, 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 much bigger than that. Um, that, that was my drop in the bucket reference, you know, from us studying that report. And that republic, that report's public, correct?
Oh, yeah.
I'll be honest, it's not fun nor easy to read.
Not sport.
But it is science. It's not voodoo. It's, it's math. It's regulated by an organization. It's not something we stray from, correct?
Right.
So now I keep going back to traffic is not as much of an issue as we feel it is. Ann Arbor Road traffic absolutely is. Nobody's arguing that. This community is not impacting Ann Arbor Road to the point where you would perceive, be able to perceive it. So I, I, I know that's been a major part of this conversation. And I guess if the math tells us that the worst part of the day, at most, it will add, like you said, twenty cars at a given time.
I'm just guessing at that.
Yeah. But, but even at the worst possible time, it's what, less than two hundred cars each way?
Oh, yeah.
Versus how many thousands of cars on Ann Arbor Road during that same peak time?
Well, I, I think, you know, secondarily, you know, we looked at that as well. And we agree with, if the mitigation of the road to the north is connected, then we agree with you. We don't think it's gonna be necessarily as, as drastic as what it may appear. So it was the, the crux of our report was really just about the original site plan, which didn't have that full-time access, and there was gonna be increased delays at those intersections.
Well, can we refer to those about the act?
Uh, I mean, there's quite a few of them. He looked at quite a few different intersections, quite a few different turning movements, et cetera. But the longest, I think the longest one we saw was forty-one seconds, which is, uh, unacceptable, um, in our opinion. So that's why we asked for the mitigation, um, beyond that.
Forty-one seconds added?
Yeah, forty-one seconds added. So that's, that's the main reason that we looked at this connectivity and we look at this mitigation measure is to help, uh, reduce those, you know, traffic strains. So, but at the end of the day, the data they produced with the mitigation, we feel comfortable with on, on the engineering side.
It was pre or was now pre bringing Amazon? Level ratings?
Try it again, yes.
So that's the level ratings, the ED at the intersections, you said that?
No, I didn't say that. I said that, that it does.
Oh, yeah, okay.
On top of that, it assumes, remember, it's gonna take a few years to build this out. So we, let's say we counted the, the, the cars yesterday. And it's gonna take five years to build the development out. It also, our study also incorporated the growth that's gonna happen in the network during the time, from the time we counted it to the time the, the last apartment is rented. On top of that, we added an adjustment for COVID because counts that are collected in the last couple, the last eighteen months or two years or so have not been, they've been up and down, but there, you have to account for that. So we did, and we added Henry Ford and Amazon. So that's where background gets, that's that first one, then we added our traffic to that for future.
And we can confirm that. We reviewed both of those traffic studies for Henry Ford and for Amazon. And I'm aware of the COVID fact, that's an FHWA rule that came down. So these are all standard, standard items.
Okay, well, any comments from the commission?
Chairman Spolsky, I'm not sure if this is appropriate for this meeting, but I guess I'll ask it anyway, and you can chastise me later.
Okay.
The, Alex Martin, uh, you're the Toll Brothers, the leader for Michigan area in, in this area. My question is the North Oaks development in Ann Arbor. And for the planning commission and the board here, this is a somewhat similar development. It's on Nixon Road, which is in northeast quadrant of Ann Arbor, between Duvar and, and M fourteen. And it's comprised of what they call villas and townhomes. But it certainly has some comparisons with this. But my question to you is, have you looked at the possibility of, of taking that, your piece of this property and applying what you're doing there, where you have areas that are completely contiguous wildlife areas within that development? And, uh, townhomes that appear to me to probably be a, a little higher in price range, which would help, you know, potentially contribute to a lower density. Is there any possibility that an approach like that? a lower density? Is there any possibility that an approach like that could, you know, still allow the property to be developed, but respond to some of the concerns about the people here about density?
It's a similar but very different project. I think to look at our North Oaks project, you have to take a step, step back from just North Oaks of Ann Arbor, the Toll Brothers component, which is made up of three-story townhomes that are much higher density than what we're proposing here. They're narrower and they're shallower. So by default, you get a lot more units per acre. That would be closer to what we're considering here. But then we do have a villa product, which is equally dense as what we're offering, or potentially offering here, but they're much more expensive. But really, to do this right, you have to step back. So across the street from this community is two large apartment complexes. And I think that's a more accurate depiction of what we're doing here. You know, it's a mix. There's a connection road that runs, I can't remember the cardinal direction, forgive me. And on one side, you have our project, that is what you'd call medium density. On the other side of that road, which is very similar to our project here, is high-density apartments. Now, I will say, the scale of that area is far larger than what you're contemplating here. The other question in terms of the conservation area, as a percentage, if I remember correctly, our community at 51% is way exceeding the open space of that project, because the scale is quite a bit larger. And quite a bit of that was not necessarily our property, or it was required, I think it was deeded by the owner that sold it to us to leave it in perpetuity. So that was never going to be contemplated as part of the buildable project.
Okay, well, certainly not my impression, having driven that property, but, okay, thank you for answering the question.
I'm sorry, were you finished?
Yeah.
So, three, three and a half hours, I don't, I don't think we're going to hear anything that we haven't heard already. I think we should discuss this as a board and decide what we're going to do and take a look. That's what I just called for. I think you were out of the room. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I didn't hear you. Comments from the commission? I was indisposed. Oh, okay. So what is your comment?
I'm sorry, mine?
No, no. I don't have any, any additional ones to make. You don't have any comments? No. Gail, do you have any thoughts? Gail, you've been quiet.
Not, not anything that hasn't already been said. I have the same concerns and mixed feelings as I believe the rest of the commissioners have demonstrated throughout the, throughout the discussion.
There's a lot of good in this development.
There is. I don't know, I'm a little concerned about the, about the traffic, but after hearing the last comments from the traffic engineer, I feel a little bit better. When you look at it from seconds, it's going to be a problematic stretch, no matter what happens, with the Henry Ford and the Amazon and, and this development. And if there is a grocery store here, that's going to increase traffic as well. Do you feel, let me ask this of the commission, do you feel that any, anything you've heard here this evening refutes any of the points that were made in the recommendation by the planner?
I won't be offended, I promise.
Okay. We're, we're not going to ask you to leave the room or anything. If you feel that there's nothing that's been presented that refutes this, then, then, in my opinion, then we have to move forward on the recommendation. I mean, that's why we, we have the planner here. The expertise is analyze the ordinance. We've heard from the developer who's made some adjustments. I mean, I, I give them kudos for trying to save as many of the trees as they can. I know planting little trees doesn't make up for the big trees, but it's a lot better approach than what happened with the develop, with the commercial side of this development, where LA Fitness is, where all those trees were taken out, which didn't come before us.
I've gone over this report over and over and over tonight, and I don't see, I appreciate all the comments, and I think we can incorporate them into a site plan if it goes to that level, but I incur with the McKenna report.
Any other thoughts?
I came in here with two concerns. One was I felt we needed a more definitive response to the issues in the traffic study, and I guess I feel somewhat more comfortable with that. The second thing is, I was hoping that the developer would show a bit more flexibility in looking at switching around the elements to preserve more of those heritage trees in the middle, because as somebody commented, those trees, it's going to take 40 or 45 years for the new trees they plant to get to the size that those trees are already at. I think the new element is this situation with the northern entrance. And I'm, I'm troubled that we don't have a definitive answer from the developer, that yes, he will pay to improve the roads there, to allow that access to have value. Or, he said, the feedback we got was no, we're not going to do that. And then I worry that the traffic will go through there, it will further deteriorate the roads, and then the homeowners there will be faced with an assessment that's quite a lot of money. That's a new concern that I didn't have coming in here. So, I'm generally in favor of this development. I believe it's, I believe it's the right thing to do for the township. I do believe it would be far preferable to any type of commercial development that would take place in this land. But I'm uncomfortable with the unresolved nature, particularly around the specifics of the northern access right now.
Would you feel more comfortable if, if we do recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, that we also recommend to them to explore the possibility of a road improvement to that northern by, by the developer?
Yes, I would.
That is a possibility for the trustees to look at?
I would agree with, I would agree with that as well.
It's always, anything's possible. I don't know how it would get paid for. I'm not suggesting the township pay for it. Yeah. I mean, there have been other, other developers on the west side of the township where they have paved the roads. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that would certainly, that would certainly, I, I'm not, I, I can't tell you honestly how the Board of Trustees is going to come out on this. I don't, I don't know. But that would certainly potentially have an impact. It certainly is a factor. Yeah, I don't want to see the residents disadvantaged, you know? Yeah, I don't either. I mean, in the end, that's, that's, that's the issue, I think. And all I have, personally, all I have to go by is, is the, what the planner has recommended to us. I listened to all of the folks, some very good points made, particularly with the condition of the roads and increased traffic, which I wish we had better numbers on, but. You can have a copy of.
What did the prior-
Recommended to, to approve the PUD, subject to the, to the, subject to the items that have to be met to, to have the PUD. She points, she points it all out. She quotes, and then she has a response. So you can read through that. That's also available on the township website for anyone else that wants to read it in detail. Otherwise, we have to come up with a different approach as to why we would disagree. And I don't, I don't hear any of us been able to come up with anything that would be in a disagreement, where they haven't met what is required.
Voices of 100?
You know, this is, this is our time to speak now. We, we listened to all of you, really appreciate it, but this is our own deliberation now. As difficult as it is, it's a difficult decision for us. It really is. So, I don't know, it's up to you folks. Unless you can come up with another approach to this. But he needs to make a motion if you're-
I'll make a motion.
-gonna do so.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend that the Board of Trustees grant approval for the PUD option for application number 2406 for the Elks Development or Plymouth West. Per the Township of Plymouth zoning ordinance number 99, Article 23, Section 21.3, that the PUD meets the eight eligibility criteria outlined in the McKenna report, and also given the engineer and fire reports. And we'd also like to encourage the Board of Trustees to recommend improvements to the north, road improvements.
Is there support? No support, then the motion will die.
I'll support it.
Okay. By Commissioner Barberina, and supported by Commissioner Granger. Am I, how, am I pronouncing your name?
Greger.
Greger. Okay, thank you. To recommend to the Board of Trustees the PUD and a recommendation that further improvements be made to the northern roadway. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed?
No.
No.
No. So, let's see, we've got three and two. Two noes-
Noes.
And three yeses. Okay, the motion does pass. Anything else? Motion to adjourn. Okay. Is there support?
Support.
Okay. The meeting is adjourned at 10:42.